The February 18th, 2025 legislative session of the Anarundel County Council is called to order. Please ensure all phones and electronic devices are set to silent. Mr. Volkey will now lead us in the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Um, please bow your heads, pray in a manner consistent with your faith as I pray in a manner consistent with mine. Father God, thank you for bringing us here together again safely tonight to do the work of the people of Anarundel County. We pray that you will give us wisdom and discernment as we move forward on legislation. Help us to think about the consequences, both those that we can see and those that we can't. Help us to be mindful that the impacts of our decisions will resonate for years beyond us. It's in your name that we pray. Amen. And at this time, if the Girl Scouts would like to come up, you all can lead us in the pledge, if you don't mind.
They're Boy Scouts.
Oh, Boy Scouts, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
The PS.
Man, see, this is why I have to be careful saying anything. If the Scouts want to come up, you all can come up here and lead us. Yep? Yeah, go ahead.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chair of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located in the Ethics website under forms of publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4412.
Ms. Rodvian, I believe you would like to introduce someone or a group.
Well, it's, they actually got a little introduction already, but I'd like to say welcome to Troop 192, Scouts of America, and we're so glad that you're here and thank you for such a nice leading of the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. I don't know if that was, you did a nice job, like you've done it many times before. So, very glad to have you here, very grateful for young people who are learning about things like local government.
All right. So, before we open our discussions and public hearing, I would like to remind everyone in attendance, whether testifying or as a member of the audience, we must maintain decorum at all times within these chambers. Please understand that individual conversations in the audience are very disruptive to the proceedings, and I would kindly ask you to step out of the chambers if a side discussion is necessary. We will now open our invitation to the audience. This is an opportunity to speak briefly on any subject not included on the printed agenda. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair, we received four pieces which were shared with the council, added to the record and posted to the website.
We will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. When I call your name, please come up to the table and have a seat, and when it is your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit as others are signed up to speak. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts using our online testimony tool. So, previously signed up, we have Jim Holman, Sally Hiller, Mike Brown, Kirk Svensson, and Jignan Patel. And you can start down on that end.
Good evening, Madam Councilwoman and fellow members of the council. My name is Michael Brown. I live in Glen Burnie, 21060. I want to talk to you about a few, two topics this evening. The first topic is open data. I believe I brought this to your guys' attention before. The open data web portal for the county only consists of overlays and maps, no underlying data. A great resource that you guys can look at is Baltimore City, and I cannot believe I am saying that, but they have several pieces of information such as 911 calls, arrests, calls for service, 311 requests, all that. I believe the overlays and maps that you guys provide are important, but the underlying data is also important to keep our elected officials accountable. I also want to talk about development, especially in District 3. I got noticed probably last month about another 80 to 85 townhomes being built on Marlinneck Boulevard. Infrastructure in that area will not sustain much more development unless improvements are made before these homes are put up, including schools, roadways, and especially the power grid. I know there's been discussion on this council about banning gas-powered lawn equipment. I encourage the council, before you vote on that, if it comes back up, to really look into if our power grid can sustain all this, especially if we're making a push to EV vehicles. Is it possible? Are we going to have brownouts or blackouts? Since the warehouses on Sully Road have been built, I can count on multiple hands how many outages that we have had. I'll submit additional testimony through the website. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Hi, I'm Jignan Patel. I live in the Sun Valley neighborhood of Glen Burnie. I'm here to talk about the Nixon property and workforce housing. After the community meeting for the Nixon property development, there was over 24 pages worth of comments submitted to the developer expressing concerns about the development. The developer's response to 80% of those comments was, "Workforce Housing says I can do whatever I want." At that same time, we submitted countless emails to Department of Zoning, again expressing those same concerns, and their response basically was, "Well, workforce housing allows that developer to build, so we're going to let them build." Workforce housing on the Nixon property lacks common sense and it lacks oversight. And the problem with the way that workforce housing is written is that it doesn't distinguish when a piece of land is a good fit and when it isn't. For example, my street, Monahan Road, is a dead-end street with only 29 houses, yet it's going to be one of the main entrances into this new development. So if you average two cars per household, and even if those cars only leave their house one time a day, leave and come back, that's over 680 times that a car is going to be coming and going onto a dead-end street that only has 29 houses. These are roads that only one car can pass at a time. You have to pull over in front of someone's driveway if there's someone coming in the opposite direction, yet this county thinks that it's okay to allow this high-density housing on that property. Workforce housing needs to be amended with stricter criteria for what land they can build on, because sometimes it just doesn't make sense. And that's the case with the Nixon property development.
Thank you, Ms. Patel. Mr. Svensson?
Hi, Kurt Svensson, Arnold, Maryland. Last meeting, I asked why the family that recently moved into a home identical to mine, right across the street, is paying so much more in county property taxes than I am, about 70% more. You know why. Anarundel County has one of the lowest caps on taxable assessment growth in the state, a 2% cap compared to the 10% provided for under the Homestead Property Tax Credit Program. The property tax burden is determined by two factors in combination with one another, the taxable assessment and the tax rate. Elected officials have full control over the property tax burden by setting the tax rate in light of whatever the taxable assessment value may be. If that taxable assessment value grows dramatically, then the elected officials can and should set a lower tax rate. The Homestead Tax Credit Program does not somehow automatically result in a lower property tax burden. Sure, it might lower it for some, but at the expense of others. Here's a real example elsewhere in the county. Two homes across the street from one another with assessments of about $820,000. One homeowner, who does not qualify for the Homestead Tax Credit, pays $8,000 in county property taxes. Their neighbor pays $3,500. That's 2.2 times more, $4,500 more than their neighbor pays. The only difference is one has lived there since 1990 or earlier, the other is new to the neighborhood. That is not equity and taxation. Despite the rhetoric used, this program is not targeted to older populations, nor is it subject to any income or wealth limits. Let's get started on the journey towards equity and taxation and change the Homestead Tax Credit Cap back to 10%. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Svensson. Ms. Hiller?
Yes, my name is Sally Hiller, and I live on Meyer Station Road in Odenton, Maryland. I am concerned about Two Rivers Associates building 377 additional homes on Plot O and R on Meyer Station Road and Gray's Ford Road. This is in direct violation of a covenant with the developer and the Forks of Patuxent Improvement Association. This covenant was received for record at the Circuit Court on March 8th, 2016, and is an official legal document. The developer, Two Rivers Associates, chooses to declare it null and void and wants to build on land that was to be, first, a golf course and then an environmental area with walking trails. Who holds the developer accountable? When the sketch plan's submittal requirements require that the developer provide title references and histories, and the developer omits the fact that they placed the property under restrictive covenants in 2016, which prohibit residential and commercial building, and that these restrictions run with and bind the land, who holds the developer accountable? When a well-known and respected developer approaches the community and offers to enter into a covenant so that both groups can benefit, both groups are protected, and then they decide to declare that covenant null and void, who holds the developer accountable? When the promised green space environmental area is about to be taken away, deforested, covered with paved impervious surfaces, requiring additional exceptions, who holds the developer accountable? When traffic studies identify that the road infrastructure is woefully inadequate, and the developer says, "Not my problem, it's the county's," who holds the developer accountable? The developer claims it is not their responsibility, the covenant doesn't really mean anything. I ask the county to hold them accountable to that covenant.
Thank you, Ms. Hiller. Mr. Holman?
Good evening, Madam Chair and councilmembers. My name is Jim Holman. I am the current President of the Forks of the Patuxent Improvement Association. I am here speaking on behalf of our community regarding the additional 377 homes that Two Rivers developer would like to add to their already existing 2060-home development. Our community has an agreement with the Two Rivers developer that is signed, notarized, attached, and recorded with the deed for the land of the Two Rivers development. At the administrative hearing in March of 2016, this document was also recorded for the record regarding limiting Two Rivers developer to 2060 homes and placing parcels O and R as open space, not to be built on, but to be used as a nature walking trail for Two River community residents. To date, our county government has chosen not to recognize this agreement that our community has with the developer. This is a signed legal document that the county has recorded with the deed to the land and have entered into county records during an administrative hearing. Our community expects the county to recognize and support this legal and binding document. Madam Chair, you have stated at public meetings that you inherited this mess with the 2060 homes from Two Rivers, and granted, you did inherit that mess. But you have also stated on more than one occasion that the 377 homes were a done deal. The 377 homes have not yet been approved by the county, are not part of the 2060 homes agreed upon by the county as well as with our community, and it is not a done deal. I and our community are asking you and this council to recognize and to support this legal and binding document that runs with the land of the Two Rivers development and limit the developer to 2060 homes. I thank you for your time. I do have two letters from our attorney down to planning and zoning that do address the fact that the developer did omit that there is a restriction on the land when they submitted their documentation.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Holman.
And I also have a copy of our covenant that I would like to submit as well.
You can share those. Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak? Please come up to the table and state your name, address, and topic before making your remarks. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Again, this is for, to speak on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Go ahead.
My name is Andrew Meyer. I live on Meyer Station Road in Odenton, Maryland. Ms. Hummer, on March 21st, 2024, you met with our community at the clubhouse at Two Rivers. The topic was road improvements for ingress and egress for our area. Your opening reply was, "I did not create this problem, I inherited it." The problem is, the county took a community of 120 houses and granted 2060 building permits with no changes to existing roads. At that time, only 1,800 houses had been built, and the developers were just starting the final phase of 249 houses. There was a large crowd of people who were upset by the inadequate roads to accommodate the new houses, and the development was still not completed. The only changes to date was to change a small portion of Conway Road to accommodate the new elementary school. Adding 377 more houses to the equation without fixing the road problem would be like throwing a five-gallon bucket of gas onto a fire to put it out. Mrs. Hummer, you may not have created this problem, but you can certainly stop it from getting worse. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Mr. Minahan?
Good evening, Matt Minahan, Edgewater, Maryland, Chair of the Growth Action Network. You're going to hear tonight about congestion on Route 2 in Edgewater, and I want you to remember that there's one bus per hour servicing that corridor. The Growth Action Network, our vision statement talks about a fully funded infrastructure before development occurs, a theme you've heard multiple times tonight. Roads already being congested in most areas of the county, real estate lacking to expand capacity, you can't expand state roads easily, so, and yet, we still need to add more housing. We need to add more dense housing to meet the affordable housing needs of the county. Our current adequate public facilities test for roads appears to be inadequate. We're collecting the money, and the roads aren't improved. Given the increased traffic in areas where there's been significant development, Savannah Park, Edgewater, Crofton, Gambrels, Jessup, Fort Meade, Odenton, most major transportation corridors in the county are state-managed roads, and there just is no room to expand those state-managed roads. The only solution is more transit, a lot more transit, and one bus an hour in, through Edgewater, which is a critical corridor, which you're going to hear complaints about tonight, is insufficient and inadequate. And particularly as you enter the budget season, I'm hoping "we can't afford transit" doesn't become the mantra here, because if you're going to add housing at this level and add congestion to this level, the only solution is more transit. It is the reasonable, sensible, and humane thing to do when you put more people into a small congested area, not only for those who are joining that area, but for those who are living there currently. So, we would ask, where are the bills for the Transportation APF? Where's the impact fee revision? These studies have been done for a year and a half. They should be before the council and debated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Minahan. Ms. Fox?
Good evening, excuse me, Kate Fox. I live in Davidsonville. I'm Chair of the GAN Legislative Committee. Tonight, I want to talk to you about non-market housing. Excuse me. History has shown that market-based approach is not effective in providing affordable housing to people with below-average income. The MPDU and workforce housing bills have been, have good intentions, but all the numbers suggest they won't be very effective at reducing the affordable housing deficit. However, there is a lot of evidence that non-market housing, in which government is a nonprofit or a nonprofit owns a significant stake, and could be an effective solution to the problem. The non-market approach allows local governments to set the conditions on who the occupants are and what their costs are. Non-market housing examples in Vienna and Paris have been highlighted in the New York Times. Locally, Montgomery County has provided funds for their Housing Opportunities Commission to own a controlling stake in multiple apartment complexes, with the majority of the units targeting the lower-middle-income market. In Anarundel County, ACDS has been working on a smaller scale using the Housing Trust Fund. The work has successfully leveraged a relatively small amount of funding to produce a significant number of affordable residences. This can be viewed as a successful pilot project for non-market housing in the county. Now, it's time to step up the funding. If we residents are serious about solving the affordable housing problem, we have to be willing to spend some money on it. We know that the budget is tight, but it's a question of priorities. Montgomery County and our ACDS have shown us that earmarking only 1% of the county budget for affordable housing could have a very big impact. Please assure that non-market housing is funded at a level commensurate with the severity of the problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. So, the invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any item, any council, oh, I'm sorry. Come on up. No problem. Come on up.
All right. Phil Lietto, Poplar Avenue, Annapolis, Maryland. Good evening. I'm here to follow up our group testimony last month on the genocide in Palestine. Some of you have responded, and we're in dialogue, and I thank you and sincerely look forward to our conversation. I'm here to speak to the majority of you who have not responded despite our following up our email with a phone call. Perhaps we didn't explain thoroughly enough why it is indeed a local issue, but that is why we reached out to have a follow-up conversation, to make sure we adequately explained this and answer your questions and fill in any details you may be missing. There is a saying that the people in power insist that you use proper channels to change things because they have control of the proper channels and they're confident they won't work. I've seen this time and time again, and whether knowingly or not, you are further reinforcing this fact. By ignoring us when we go through the proper channels, what choice will you leave us but to look for other means of communication and engagement on this issue? It cannot be ignored and resolved on its own, and we cannot sit idly by and allow it to remain unspoken. We honestly don't want to have to pop up in your life unexpectedly, but if that is the only choice you leave us and the community, we will engage that way. We have so many other issues in our communities right now that we'd rather spend time working on. Honestly, if we have to organize and spend time and resources to pressure you to condemn a genocide and ethnic cleansing, which are supposed to be the most egregious crimes that can be committed, and that we are arming and you're unable to find the courage to speak out, I'm afraid I must conclude that you and we are already lost and probably unsalvageable as a community and a nation. Maybe I shouldn't be surprised, since the U.S. has supported and committed at least several genocides in the past. Despite this, I retain hope that we can do better. I hope this country can change, and it starts with local elected officials such as yourselves and takes courage and honest assessments of our society. But if you do not have the courage to do what is right, at least have the honesty with us and yourself to admit it. Things are getting worse in Palestine. I hope that we will hear from you soon. If not, we'll see you around.
Thank you. Invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any item any councilmember would like to place on the agenda? Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt, on behalf of the administration, after discussions with council members and given the uncertainty with the budget situation at the state and federal level, we would like to ask that Bill 7-25 be withdrawn.
It is done. Thank you. So, may I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Schultz, I'll let you sort out who said what first there. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of February 3rd, 2025.
The county council meeting was called to order by Chair Hummer at 7:03 PM. It was opened with the invocation given by Ms. Pickard and was followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The meeting was held in the county council chambers in Annapolis, Maryland.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of February 3rd, 2025? So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the motion carries. The minutes of February 3rd, 2025 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 1725, In Ordnance Concerning Snug Harbor Waterways Improvement District Modification. Bill Number 1825, In Ordnance Concerning Boards, Commissions, and Similar Bodies, Board of Appeals, Zoning, Administrative Hearings, Mixed Use Districts. Bill Number 1925, In Ordnance Concerning Current Expense Budget, Second Quarter Transfer and Supplementary Appropriations. Bill Number 2025, In Ordnance Concerning Zoning, Conditional Uses, Townhouse Dwellings, and Workforce Housing. Bill Number 2125, In Ordnance Concerning Zoning, Residential Districts, Use and Merger of Unimproved Lots of Substandard Area or Dimensions.
Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 525, Resolution Amending Portions of Titles 3 and 5 of the Rules of Procedure of the County Council. Resolution Number 625, Resolution in Honor of Heart Health Month Urging Anarundel County to Provide the Community with Tools to Help Save People Suffering from Sudden Cardiac Events by Installing publicly accessible wall-mounted or standalone automated external defibrillators, AEDs, in Anarundel County parks. Resolution Number 725, Resolution Urging Members of the General Assembly to Support House Bill 735 and Senate Bill 642 in furtherance of increasing the recycling and reuse of beverage containers and reducing litter and pollution. Resolution Number 825, Resolution Appointing Members to the Ad-Hoc Committee Established to Study and Make Recommendations on Personnel Policies for the Legislative Branch of the Anarundel County Government and Extending the Deadline for the Final Report.
May I have, may I please have a motion to suspend Rule 5106 to vote on Resolutions Number 625, 725, and 825 at the end of the meeting? Rodvian, so moved. Do I have a second? All those, oh, Madam Secretary, please call the roll to suspend Rule 5106 to vote on Resolutions Numbers 625, 725, and 825 at the end of the meeting.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to suspend Rule 5106 to vote on Resolution 625, 725, and 825 at the end of the meeting tonight has passed.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the bill, the title of Bill Number 625 as amended.
Bill Number 625, In Ordnance Concerning Public Safety, Animal Care and Control, Zoning, Miniature Pigs, and Residential Districts.
Ms. Fiedler, this is your bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to quickly recap, this bill came to me from a constituent who referenced a previous piece of legislation that had a sunset in the county. After some consideration, I decided to introduce legislation for Alfred, a miniature pig in District 5. We've restricted the bill from its original form to require spaying and neutering, require certain boundaries between the property and the enclosure for a pet pig, limited to two pet pigs, and I think that's the high-level summary, and I hope this evening we can pass this bill and get Alfred home. Thank you.
Mr. Hunt, do you have anything to add into this? Make sure, introduce your panel.
I was going to introduce my panel. Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt, on behalf of the administration. With me, I have Claudia Roll, our Administrator of Animal Care and Control; Kelly Kenny, our Supervising County Attorney; and Lynn Miller, our Assistant Planning and Zoning Officer. We're happy to answer any questions, but we're comfortable with the bill where it is.
Is there any discussion from my colleagues? All right, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 625 as amended. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair, we received three pieces of testimony which have been shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
Okay. We will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. When I call your name, please come up to the table and have a seat. When it is your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit as others are signed up to speak. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts as early as tomorrow using our online testimony tool. So, previously signed up, we have Greg Fisk, Mary Grovan, Jim Leers, and Jacqueline Kyle. All right, Mr. Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Chair and county council. I'm here on behalf of the Local Legislative Committee for Anarundel County Association of Realtors. We appreciate the opportunity to provide testimony in opposition to Bill 625, the legislation which seeks to reclassify miniature pigs in residential districts. The legislation which seeks to reclassify miniature pigs in residential districts poses significant concerns regarding its impact on homeowners' rights and established community standards of HOAs. Homeowners' associations, HOAs, exist to uphold community standards that residents knowingly agree to when purchasing a home. These standards, codified in covenants, conditions, and restrictions, and bylaws, reflect the collective intent of homeowners to maintain a specific neighborhood environment. By overriding these agreements, Bill 625 disregards the contractual rights of homeowners and weakens the foundational governance of HOAs. Many residents choose to live in communities with explicit rules governing property use, including regulations related to pet ownership. These restrictions play a critical role in preserving property values. We believe this issue could be addressed at the local HOA level and not countywide. We respectfully urge Anarundel County Council to reject Bill 625 and leave this issue to the respective HOA. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisk. Ms. Grovan?
Hi, my name is Mary Grovan. Good evening, council members. I'm the owner of First Choice Property Management, 1216 Annapolis Road, Odenton, Maryland. I manage several HOAs in the Anarundel County, and I strongly oppose this Bill 625. This bill is being pushed to accommodate one constituent's personal situation, but instead of addressing it directly, it would override established HOA bylaws and covenants. Over 5,000 homes adjacent to 3,524 homes and approximately 63 HOAs would be directly affected. This isn't how legislation should work. This bill was modeled after 625 was modeled after Bill 7018, but it strips away some key protections. Bill 7018 was passed to resolve a dispute between two homeowners in a non-HOA-regulated community where zoning rules for pigs weren't met. It sunsetted just three months after being passed, and it included some real safeguards like permit requirements, annual vet certification, a nuisance clause, waste and runoff regulations. Bill 625 removes these protections, weakens the enforcements, and leaves the HOA with no recourse. So when problems arise, it could cost and place unnecessary financial burdens on the homeowners. This bill is unnecessary and unfair to the thousands of homeowners who follow their HOA bylaws and covenants and expect their community standards to be upheld. I urge you to vote no on Bill 625.
Thank you, Ms. Grovan. Mr. Leers?
Good evening. First, I would like to extend my heartfelt thanks to Councilwoman Amanda Fiedler. Your commitment to listening and responding to the concerns of your constituents is commendable. Thank you also to the other council members for your dedication to our community. Your willingness to evaluate Bill 625 means a great deal to us. I stand before you in full support of the passage of Bill 625. This journey began with a simple desperate plea to help when a miniature pig was abandoned on a farm in Anarundel County. My family and I stepped in, cared for this animal, and through this we grew to love him deeply. This experience compelled us to take action instead of letting someone else deal with a bad situation. Candidly, our commitment quickly turned to frustration as we confronted the reality that despite being responsible citizens, our freedom to manage our own property was unduly restricted. It seemed unreasonable that our desire to provide a safe and loving home for a miniature pig, known for their intelligence and cleanliness, would be hindered by outdated regulations. Thankfully, Councilwoman Fiedler took the initiative and crafted Bill 625. This bill proposes reasonable regulations, like a 47,500-square-foot minimum lot size, mandatory castration limits the number of miniature pigs alongside significant buffers to adjacent or adjoining dwellings. These measures ensure that while residents like myself can enjoy the freedom to care for a pet on their property, the remainder of the community remains protected. This bill is not just about allowing a miniature pig into a home. It affirms the rights of citizens to responsibly use their property, fostering compassion within the community and setting a precedent for how responsive governance can effectively solve issues. I hope that you'll pass this bill, not only for the well-being of one miniature pig or one family, but for the principle of personal freedom and the humane treatment of all beings in Anarundel County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leers. Ms. Kyle?
Good evening. My name is Jacqueline Kyle of the Animal Welfare Council. We are here tonight to reiterate our support for Bill 625. Before the Animal Welfare Council makes a decision of whether or not to weigh in on a bill, we go through an information gathering phase. Some of the information we gathered was already included in our testimony from the first hearing. Here is some additional information. We asked for data on the number of permitted miniature pigs currently in Anarundel County. There is one permitted pig. We also asked for the number of complaints on miniature pigs for the last five years. None were found. We have spoken with experts involved in rehoming of abused and abandoned miniature pigs and the operation of pig sanctuaries. Many of the recommendations that they have voiced are contained within amended Bill 625, such as requiring spay-neuter, providing adequate space to provide for normal behaviors, and the option to have up to two pigs per property. Interestingly, we found during our research that there are many highly qualified applicants willing to save the life of these vulnerable homeless pet pigs who are actually allowed to do so. The biggest limiting factor for getting these pets to safety is because of the zoning restrictions in so many communities. We believe Bill 625 is balanced to protect miniature pigs like Alfred and the residential areas where they would be allowed to be housed. We ask you to please vote in favor of this bill.
Thank you, Ms. Kyle. Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 625? Come on up. Please come to the table and have a seat. When it's your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks are limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit. And if you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts as early as tomorrow using our online testimony tool. Go for it.
My name is Max Gross. I'm here testifying tonight on behalf of the Anarundel County Association of Realtors and to strongly oppose this bill. I do appreciate all of the amendments that have made. This definitely limited the scope, and we do appreciate that our thoughts have been listened to. However, the root issue is the reclassification from livestock to pet, and what that could mean for any other pigs that exist in this county, what that could mean to any other pig owners that exist in this county who are already currently using their, or currently owning their pigs as livestock, and what a pet regulation would change about how they are able to treat or deal with the pigs they own. We also have a jurisdictional issue, which is, as other testimony has indicated, this is an issue that could have been resolved by the HOA, by the community itself. There was an informal survey put out. There was discussion about whether or not this pig would be welcomed in the community. And when that did not go the way that this constituent wanted to, or instead of continuing to advance that notion, they decided that it was easier to change a county law than it was to change an HOA regulation. Generally, as a defender of private property rights, we feel like it is strange that it is easier to change a county law than an HOA regulation, and that this type of issue should be regulated by the communities that the pig would exist within, and that the HOA is the appropriate venue to raise these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hello, sorry. I'm Jackson Leers, 1606 Charney Lane. I'm speaking in support of Bill 6-25. I love to see our pig Alfred, however, I'm often unable to go. If allowed, I would love to take Alfred home to help build a house within an enclosure on our property. This would further help my family take, my family and I take care of Alfred. But as I said before, this won't just help us. This could help many, this could help many families rescue miniature pigs.
Thank you. Mr. Svensson?
Svensson, Arnold, Maryland, and I apologize if I'm out of order. I have a, I'm seeking guidance. The four resolutions that you've introduced but now are going to vote on later this evening, is there going to be public hearings for those? Because I don't want to sit around if there's not going to be public hearings, no public hearings. Okay, I thought so. Thanks.
All right. Thank you all very much. The public hearing on Bill Number 625 is now closed. Madam Secretary, oh, please read the title of Bill Number 625 as amended.
Bill Number 625, An Ordnance Concerning Public Safety, Animal Care and Control, Zoning, Miniature Pigs, and Residential Districts.
All right, Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank the Realtors Association for coming out and previous members, the conversations and email exchanges that we have had in the last two weeks. I think oftentimes, as counsel comes and deliberates pieces of legislation, there's just difference of opinion. I can think back on many zoning bills that have been brought by one constituent in any district. I think we can all speak to that, that may conflict with HOA bylaws and covenants, watermen's businesses, home businesses. I did a bill just not too long ago for home care for pets in home businesses. So, you know, I just want to keep that in mind, that we discuss topics like this all the time. Some get more attention than others, and certainly animals do a lot of times. I just want to address some of the testimony regarding the nuisances and what would be allowed with a pet pig. The original bill from 2018 did have very specific parameters for animal care in that legislation, but that was existing code. That still is in code today. In Section 124801, there is a whole section about enclosures for animals outdoors other than dogs. One of those requirements is that it be kept clean and free of feces and urine, that it be maintained in a safe and humane manner to minimize health hazards and obnoxious odors, is bounded by a fence or other appropriate barrier designed, constructed, and maintained to keep the enclosed animals restrained within the enclosure, and manure shall be removed from the building sheds and coops daily. With regard to veterinary care, in Section 124802 of our code, veterinary care, it says, "An owner of an animal may not unnecessarily fail to provide the animal with necessary veterinary care." And there is a Class D civil offense penalty if that is violated. So there is a veterinary care requirement. And then there's very specific language for animal nuisance. In 124903, it says, "An owner of an animal may not permit the animal to be a public nuisance or to cause a nuisance, public nuisance condition." And then 124904, our code says, "A person who owns, keeps, or has possession of an animal may not permit the animal to disturb the quiet of a person or the neighborhood." And there is additional language about enclosures. And then finally, there is a civil penalty for violating any section of that portion of our code. So there are some protective measures in our code to address some of the concerns in the testimony that we heard here this evening.
Are there any other comments or discussion from my colleagues? All right. Hold on, I've lost my place. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 625 as amended.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith. Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer. Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 625 has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 9724 as amended.
Bill Number 9724, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning Requirements for Conditional Uses School Bus Facilities.
Mr. Volkey, this is your bill?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So we have talked about this bill quite extensively. We've amended this bill at multiple meetings. With that, I would ask my colleagues to support it, and I thank you for your consideration.
Mr. Hunt?
Ethan Hunt for the administration. I have Lynn Miller, our Assistant Planning and Zoning Officer, and Kelly Kenny, our Supervising County Attorney. I would echo Mr. Volkey's statements. We have discussed this at many hearings and amended it many times, and we're comfortable with the bill.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Okay, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 9724 as amended. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
No one signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on Bill Number 9724? Okay. The public hearing on Bill Number 9724 as amended is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 9724 as amended.
Bill Number 9724, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning Requirements for Conditional Uses School Bus Facilities.
Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 9724 as amended.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer. Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 9724 has passed.
Please read the title of Bill Number 225 as amended.
Bill Number 225, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Zoning Development Requirements for Particular Types of Development/Redevelopment.
Is everybody up for you, Mr. Hunt? Nope. Okay. All right. No problem. Yes, while Mr. Hunt changes his password so he can be allowed to get in, so hold on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Jansen Evelyn, our Deputy Chief Administrative Officer, Lori Klosmeyer, our Deputy County Attorney, and Lynn Miller, our Assistant Planning and Zoning Officer. So Bill 2-24, we have discussed at a couple prior meetings, but I just wanted to sort of table-set and remind the council of what the purpose and intent of this redevelopment bill is. So the purpose of this bill is to encourage reuse and improvements to older vacant and underutilized commercial properties. It's to create additional opportunities for better housing choices, better access to goods and services, and employment opportunities. It's also intended to promote and emphasize conservation of our natural resources while promoting smart and equitable growth. And it is intended to facilitate and incentivize redevelopment by streamlining the development approval process while relaxing some development requirements, providing flexibility in land uses, and offering financial incentives. It also links to objectives in Plan 2040 by incentivizing redevelopment in the targeted growth areas and revitalization areas that you see on the map up there, which are the Critical Economic, Critical Corridor, Town Center, and Transit Oriented Development Overlay Areas. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Evelyn for some additional comments.
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council. Before I go into my remarks, I want to also read a statement from County Executive Stuart Pittman. It begins with, "I have heard concerns from constituents, primarily in Edgewater, that Bill 225 will increase traffic, overcrowd schools, and target the area for growth. I believe that the bill does none of those things and will expedite reuse of vacant commercial sites like the former Giant on Route 2 that residents complained about for the last decade. I have shared the following points on social media and would like to share them publicly tonight. Bill 225 was drafted with environmental advocates at the table and is supported by the county's largest coalition of neighborhood associations, Growth Action Network. It expedites approvals as an incentive for developers to invest in already developed sites rather than new development. It targets specific commercial areas of the county because that's where our vacant commercial ISRs exist. It allows redevelopment of commercial sites to be residential with a maximum density that increases from the current 15 units per acre to 22." Residential development, even at the maximum density generated- The school system is redistricting, not only because our county has some overcrowded schools, but also because we have schools that need more students to maintain state funding. The redevelopment bill does not impact Anarundel County Public Schools redistricting process. If individual members of the county council introduce amendments to exempt corridors in their districts that are currently included in the bill, those amendments will pass if enough of their peers from other districts support them. I don't have a vote on the council. Bill 225 is a smart tool that some have said should be applied countywide. We chose to limit its use to specific areas. My interest is in getting the tool applied broadly. Council members know their districts, and I trust that they will make wise decisions about where this redevelopment tool should be applied." And I'm going to try to be very brief, even though I know I can be a bit on the loquacious side. But I want to be very clear, because I know there has been some misinformation as well as disinformation that has been circulating publicly around this legislation. From the time the Pittman administration started, we have always had a policy orientation towards smart, sustainable, intentional, and equitable land use policy, towards placemaking, and to build in this community to meet current needs and future needs. Towards that end, this administration, along with this legislative body, we've done the work, and it has been difficult at times on policies like Forest Con, centering affordable housing by creating a dedicated funding source for ACDS, with creating an inclusionary housing policy, and others. Along the way, this body adopted Plan 2040, the county's general development plan, a short and long-range policy framework to address how we meet the challenges and opportunities that come with an increase in population, the need for more housing, ensuring that we preserve our green spaces while keeping this county economically vibrant now and down the road, all the while preserving the various community characters that make this the best place for all. Plan 2040 is guided by five overarching themes: resilient, environmentally sound, and sustainable communities. And that, and it says, "Planning land and land use decisions affecting development and redevelopment will enhance neighborhoods while protecting the natural environment and creating," I'm sorry, "increasing community resilience to climate change." They also talk about new improved infrastructure, inclusive, equitable, and responsive government, but they also mention community character. Communities will feature sensible, people-oriented development to complement the existing scale of neighborhoods. It also talks about strategic economic growth and, gasp, redevelopment. Development will increasingly be mixed-use, mixed-income, and transit-oriented projects in previously developed sites. Development projects will incorporate resilient, sustainable design that demonstrate efficient use of available resources. Smart growth will be encouraged in areas with existing infrastructure and redevelopment directed to older commercial corridors. As Ethan Hunt mentioned, this plan calls for development tools in targeted growth Some of the objectives and the plans and some of the policy goals outlined in Plan 2040 include Goal Built Environment 1, which says align development regulations and review practices with Plan 2040 that recognizes the importance of the county's environmental features, limitations on infrastructure, and desire to focus redevelopment and revitalization in the targeted development, redevelopment, and revitalization policy areas. Goal Built Environment 3.2 says, "Ensure infill development and redevelopment in existing residential neighborhoods are compatible in scale, in use, in form, and intensity with the surrounding neighborhood character." Policy Built Environment 5.1 says, "Align zoning and development regulations in the targeted development, redevelopment, and revitalization policy areas to encourage private sector development and redevelopment that will enhance the surrounding community character by prioritizing necessary capital investments and infrastructure improvements that support redevelopment in those areas." And again, I can go on and on, but I want to end with Goal Built Environment 13, "Revitalize and stabilize existing communities in order to preserve physical character, capitalize on investments and infrastructure, strengthen and beautify neighborhoods, and create economically, socially, and environmentally sustainable communities." That's what this bill does. It encourages redevelopment of gray fields, brown fields, through incentives, through regulatory relief, and through the, and the use of a streamlined review process. So, I can go on and on, but I'm going to stop now. But I want to make sure, because there's been a lot of inaccurate information that have been going around, it's been circulating, and I want to be very clear that if we read this bill, this bill is literate, one, it was one of the short-term policy goals from Plan 2040. It was also something that, there have been times where we have introduced legislation that some people said, "Oh, I didn't have a seat at the table. I didn't have an opportunity to be involved." This is not that. This is one that has been echoed and repeated and reinforced through the region plans, through the plan, through the, through the community stakeholder groups that met in the development of Plan 2040 and since then. This is something that was shared since, since 2019, people have been meeting and discussing whether it's with, with GAN, with ACT, with MBIA. This has been something that, this is a tool, this, and you know, you've heard me many times come to this table and talk about, "Oh, this is another tool in the toolbox," but this is one that everyone understands is a necessity. And why? Because for 20 to 30 years, Anarundel County had most of their development was sprawl residential, which means you have a dearth of land to build, and we want to preserve the green spaces that are available, and the way to do that, one of the ways to do that is through redevelopment. I will stop talking now. As you can see, this is something that I am passionate about, but I'm going to take any questions, but I know this is the point where you open up to the public, right?
Actually, we open to our discussion first.
Oh, okay, absolutely. Stay here then.
All right. Thank you. So, Ms. Ledbetter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just would, like, you mentioned that this bill is for redeveloping vacant properties. Can you point to me on what page in the bill vacant is in the definition of redevelopment?
So, again, what I mentioned was that Plan 2040 called for revitalization and redevelopment and redevelopment, and it wasn't just necessarily vacant or blighted properties. There were properties that are now, some of these properties are now blighted, some of them are vacant, but then there are others that, that infrastructure was built out 20, 30 years ago. Our consumer needs have evolved, and they are continuing to evolve. I mean, I do most of my shopping via Amazon, as I'm sure most of the people gathered in the space. So some of these vibrant commercial spaces that, that change could, in one year, in five years, in 10 years, changes could be made where the econo, 10 years ago, Annapolis Mall was it. It's no longer it. That's why it was sold, that's why they're trying to redevelop it and revitalize it. And those aren't, and some of the storefronts that are there, some of the big box retailers that are there, some have left, but others are still there hanging on. So this bill, what this bill is, is a regulatory framework that allows the flexibility, whether it's in an area that's, that's in need of slight, a slight tune-up, or, or major redevelopment.
But just to, so in the bill, the words blighted and vacant are not in the bill. Am I correct or incorrect?
I believe I just answered that, Madam.
Thank you. Just want to make sure I understood you.
Ms. Pickard.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. Well, administration, I want to thank you for your strong statement tonight about the policy that's before us tonight. It's very helpful to see a robust debate around this topic. The, I've gotten every email, I've read every email about some of the concerns where Ms. Ledbetter is asking about the definition of redevelopment, and there is a definition. A property has to be at least 40% impervious surface, the alley has a structure on it, blah, 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 blah. There is a definition to what would qualify as redevelopment. But in this market, or really any market, you're not going to redevelop a property that is currently occupied and bringing in revenue. It's too expensive for capital dollars, it's too expensive for construction, you're not going to raise a strip center that's active. But when that strip center does become vacant, that 1970s one-story strip center with a lot of impervious surface, this bill would allow that strip center to become something for the modern age, for the way we live now. It would bring in modern environmental mitigation, actual stormwater. Most of our old commercial corridors were built without a nod to any sort of environmental regulation, and that runoff occurs currently. So if it were to be redeveloped, those projects would have to adhere to modern stormwater and other environmental regulations, correct?
Absolutely. And that's one of the, one of the additional added benefits of redevelopment. At the time that, that many of those same centers that were built, 70s, 80s, that, they complied with whatever the governor and MS4 or Stormwater Management permits or laws were in place. It's since evolved, and any redevelopment site, or any site that, that goes through redevelopment or goes through some level of revitalization, they're going to have to conform and adhere to current stormwater management practices. So, from an environmental, this is, this is another reason why the environmental community has been so broad-based and proudly supportive of this legislation. Again, not only does it incentivize development away from the remaining greenfield that we have, but places that are, that have currently been altered by man, those places, we provide an opportunity for them to become more resilient, or more, actually, not strike resilient, but become more sustainable, because they'll be, they will adhere to stronger, best practices in, in terms of runoff, reduction of nutrient pollution, et cetera. So, yes.
So, some of the different, I think, misinformation or misunderstanding of this bill that have come up, I want to acknowledge on the record. First off, this bill does not require anyone to redevelop anything, correct?
That is very accurate, that is a very true statement, yes, Madam Chair. The reality is, as Councilmember Pickard noted earlier, there is no developer, property manager that's making, that has a profitable site that's going to all of a sudden come in and say, "Oh, let's scoundrel with that," and then all of a sudden, "Let's add a whole bunch of density." One, that's another myth that's been out there, and I want to make sure it gets, like, gets addressed as well. The reality is that this is not going to be the, I've heard or seen comments where they say, "Oh, this will be like the apartments on River Road." No. There's a reason why I went through and reiterated much to some of the council members' chagrin, those same policy areas over and over again, they all talked about community character. Redevelopment is one of the five core principles, as is community character. So even any redevelopment that occur has to be in line with that community character, which means, Efferson, sorry, I'm getting too hyped. Efferson, Efferson Severn, Efferson Crofton, it has to reflect that community. Efferson, Efferson Glenbernie, it has to reflect that community. It's not just going to be like, "Oh, let's put these," it's, this is about right-sized placemaking. And that's why the county executive have come out and he's shown leadership on this bill, it's why we, it's why we've been so definitive on this bill. Like, this is something that is a, is a plus for residents in the short term and the long term. And again, if it's in the short term and your site doesn't, and, and your shopping center or your commercial property doesn't require revitalization, there's, it'd be illogical to do it, so.
To have, so this bill does not allow someone to come in and purchase several residential lots and tear them down and build a multifamily apartment building?
No. This is, no, that is absolutely not the case.
And this bill also does not require that if you do redevelop a site, that it has to have residential housing on it? That is not a requirement of this legislation?
That's correct. I had that in my nose, but because Ari was going long and I saw some people shooting me glances, I tried to, like, cut it. But yes, that's very, very, again, they're, they're going to be sites, they're going to be parcels where you may have had, I don't know, storage, you may have had a gas station, you may have had something that, the lot is too small to come in and try to add some level of mixed-use, transit-oriented development, et cetera. But it could be, it's, it's an ISOR for that particular community, it's not helping property values, but it allows that property owner to come up with an existing, a new, I'm sorry, a new commercial use that, one, benefits the community and also is going to turn a profit for them as opposed to holding on to, to, to a vacant gas station. Again, I'm just using an example, that's not in the bill. I'm just using an example.
So, I've received a number of concerns about school capacity, which we're all concerned about with redistricting coming. I want to stress to people, and I encourage you, to go to the county website, we did an extensive study just in 2023 on school adequate public facilities that dove in-depth about what is driving school capacity issues, and three-quarters of new students that come into the county are coming from existing home sales. So that's our neighborhoods that are already there, that are turning over and families are moving into. Less than a quarter comes from new builds that come out here. Also, this small density bonus that's encouraged for, for the redevelopment, to go from R15 to R22, based on the formulas that the school system uses to calculate growth for students, which have shown to be very accurate, that increase, if it were able to max out for an acre, would result in less than one-quarter of a child. The prediction is it would add 0.238 students for, for that development. So that is not going to overburden schools, but also on top of that, these, any projects like this would have to still meet school adequate public facilities things to account for that less than one-quarter of a child that could be added. So I just want to clarify that for people who are concerned about this. Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know we're not at the amendment portion of this piece of legislation, but I just want to make a note that some of the emails did come from my district, and was, the comments were concerning residential communities and homes, and that is because the map identifier for Critical Corridor does extend into established communities. So I think that, you know, maybe that could have been a better map tweak when we were doing Plan 2040. I did ask if we can go back and amend Plan 2040 and the map and the boundaries, and that, that ship has sailed in 2021. So that is where the concern comes from, because we were talking a lot about vacant commercial lots and blighted commercial lots, but the, the area of the Critical Corridor in District 5 extends into established residential communities. So that is where the concern is coming from. Just want to make that note.
All right. Is there any, any other comments at this time from councilmembers? Ms. Pickard.
Well, can we, can we, can we continue on that Ms. Fiedler's vein, where the, the residential, we talked about this at the last meeting, or at least at the work session, I don't remember, where there is residentially zoned property that might be inside of one of these, um, Critical Corridors. Development policy areas where the bill is applicable. We talked about why those single-family home neighborhoods would not be part of the redevelopment aspect of this bill due to the uses that are allowed in those neighborhoods. Maybe Ms. Miller wanted to expand on that and say that better than I did. I don't remember, where there is residentially zoned property that might be inside of one of these, uh, um...
Critical corridors.
Development policy areas where the bill is applicable. We talked about why those single-family home neighborhoods would not be part of the redevelopment aspect of this bill, due to the uses that are allowed in those neighborhoods. Maybe Ms. Miller wanted to expand on that and say that better than I did.
Sherlin Miller, I do think at the work session, we talked about the fact that the bill for residential districts, it's not creating or allowing any uses that aren't already allowed under the current code. So, in other words, you couldn't take an R-five community and redevelop it with commercial or office uses, et cetera.
If we don't have any other comments at this time, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 225 as amended. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair, we received one hundred and forty-five pieces, which have been shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
Okay. We will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. When I call your name, please come up to the table and have a seat. When it's your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit as others are signed up to speak. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts as early as tomorrow, using our online testimony tool. Previously signed up, we have Greg Fisk, Tracy Matthews, and Michael Stroppen.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and County Council, again, for the opportunity to, to speak. My name's Greg Fisk, I'm from Arone, Maryland, and here on behalf of the local legislative committee for Anarona County Association of Realtors. We are in support of Bill 225, an essential initiative that promotes the reasonable redevelopment of underutilized commercial properties, to meet the growing housing and infrastructure needs of Anarona County. As a dedicated advocate for housing affordability and smart growth, we urge the council to pass critical, this critical legislation, which aligns with state and national efforts, including the YMB Act and Housing for Jobs Act. The housing crisis in our region is undeniable, with the housing inventory deficit persisting for over a decade. Home prices have reached record highs, making it increasingly difficult for first-time home buyers to enter the market. The median age of a first-time home buyer is now thirty-eight, the highest ever recorded, and only twenty-four percent of buyers are purchasing their first, first home, the lowest percentage since we started recording that number in nineteen eighty-one. The trend is not sustainable and threatens the long-term economic stability of our county. Additionally, Maryland is experiencing negative net population growth, losing young professionals and seniors alike. As real estate contributes approximately sixty percent of all state tax revenues, this decline in real estate transfers directly impacts our financial outlook, contributing to the state's three billion dollar budget deficit. Without local legislative action to encourage responsible redevelopment, we risk higher taxes and reduce public services. Bill 225 presents a proactive solution to these pressing challenges by encouraging the redevelopment of existing commercial properties to create vibrant mixed-use spaces, repurposing underutilized parcels into housing opportunity, addressing the region's shortage of affordable homes, reducing redevelopment costs to attract investment and spur economic growth. Modernizing zoning policies promotes sustainable development without contributing to urban sprawl. This bill is a step in the right direction, strengthening our economy and making homeownership more attainable for future generations and seniors alike.
Thank you, Mr. Fisk. Ms. Matthews.
Hi, I'm Tracy Matthews, I'm Tracy from Odenton. Nowhere in the bill are the words blighted or blighted-only properties. This is a redevelopment bill. Routes Two and Route Three cannot handle any redevelopment. The infrastructure is not there, schools and traffic are full and at capacity. Anyone who drives these routes will understand that. Please remove Routes Three and Routes Two from the bill. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. If there, is there anyone else who would like to speak on Bill Number 225?
Excuse me, my name's Ed Morris, I'm from Severna Park, I'm currently the president of the Old Severna Park Improvement Association. I know I wrote to each of you, and I wrote to each of you, and I think I heard back from most of you, and I'm going to say thank you for doing that, for taking the time to get back, because we had some real concerns. I came here this evening directly from a traffic committee meeting in Old Severna Park, which is a regular, ongoing problem for us. So the notion of increasing density in our community is frightening just on the face of it. And we recognize that we have zoning that allows for increases and changes in redevelopment in our community already. What's not been discussed here is that currently, we would incentivize with the additional density in the zoning, and the sewage of the, the connecting fees, and it doesn't replace any existing retail. Now, in our community in Severna Park, that could devastate our town categorically. We find that objectionable. My friend, gentleman speaking earlier, said that the Annapolis Mall used to be it. That's only partly true. It was Herrendale Mall used to be it, then Annapolis Mall was it, and then Marley Station was it, and now Annapolis Mall is it again. So I see that we've had change in redevelopment throughout the years already, and I think that that's worth consideration. Forgive me. It's been answered in reply that, that we don't understand the bill. We understand the bill, we understand we have space that's going to have to grow and be developed. We have not misunderstood that. You haven't understood our concern in our community, and I would second the lady who spoke before, in removing Route Two and Three sections from that. Because tonight, for the first time in my life, having moved home to my family home, and my kids are fifth generation, in Severna Park, I'll just say that for tonight was the first time I've heard Severna Park fall under the definition of vacant, blighted, or nineteen-seventies strip mall. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Craig Myers, I live in Severna Park, Dill Road. I'm not opposed to the goal of Bill 225, promoting the welfare of communities is the role of government. Restoring blighting areas should be a priority. But I believe the Glenbernie overlay shows that the, the method promoted in Bill 2.25 does not work. I am opposed to using modifications to zoning approval and environmental rules to entice development. The county should invest in improvements to transportation, infrastructure, education, and social services to make an area desirable for people to live. Developers will go to where there are people willing to pay for shopping and housing. To depend upon, and then with the concern with Severna Park, to depend upon the, no developer would do this to our area is not valid. Our area is the place where developers will go to do things, because there is money, and there are people willing to spend that money. Since 2-25 is a very real possibility, then the collateral damage should be reduced by accepting the amendments to exclude non-blighted areas. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I got to get this over here. All right, can you hear me? I'll lean over a lot. I'm Maureen Carr York, I'm president of the Greater Severna Park Council. The two gentlemen to my left grew up in Severna Park. There's a lot of people in Severna Park who grew up there. Not me, I came in eighty-eight. You all were probably still in school at that point, but I've been there a long time, and I can tell you why people stay. It's because of the small-town atmosphere. And I know small towns, I grew up in one that had eight thousand people, they actually called themselves a village. Moving around the different places in the country, different towns, including Columbia, where they tried to plan a small-town feel, I didn't find it till I came to Severna Park. And it really is a place where our commercial, the commercial members of our community, the residential members of our community, those who work there, come together in a wonderfully supportive atmosphere that we don't want to see changed by a bill that would allow commercial areas to be redeveloped with nothing but residential units. That's a problem no matter what year it happens. You all remember that we participated in Plan 2040, we did not like the designation of critical corridor, because we figured it would be used for something just like this. And you remember, we participated in our regional plan, and we did not want to see our, our commercial areas designated as mixed-use. Mixed-use was taken out of the plan. Most of you voted to support keeping our areas designated commercial, and yet here we are with a way to get around the designation of commercial zoning, regardless of what it suggests. If you can take out our whole, you know, or a huge part of our commercial area and turn it residential, it's a problem. So that's why I'm here tonight, I hope that you will consider seriously Ms. Fiedler's amendment. I think it's better for our area and for the county ultimately, because then you'll use this bill where it needs to be used, and we'll support you.
Thank you, Ms. Carr York. Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Max Gross, I'm speaking tonight in, for the Anarona County Association of Realtors. I spoke briefly two weeks ago on support of this bill, and tonight I am not sure that I'll be able to make it in two minutes, because I have much more detailed support. We strongly support Bill 225. There is a dearth of housing in Anarona County. We all know that there is development that needs to happen in Anarona County. It is the job of the county council to decide where and how that development happens, and Bill 225 is actually a very modest step in determining that. The most common, sorry, the most common objections to development are both environmental and traffic-related. Environmental objections say, we should be building outside of critically endangered areas, we should be building in places where there are already infill, where there is already impervious space. This bill says, let's build where there is already impervious space, let's identify critical areas that are not in environmentally damaged or at-risk areas. They have addressed the environmental concerns. Then you have traffic. Traffic, development without traffic is complicated. You can't look at it with just this bill. This council has passed a mixed-use development bill, this council has passed an ADU bill, this council has passed a moderately priced missing-middle dwelling bill, all of which help to build toward a, an environment where when there is development, it's going to be mixed-use development, and it's going to be in areas where there are already jobs, and where there is already commercial activity. Scholarly studies, peer-reviewed studies show that when you put housing closer to jobs, it reduces vehicle miles traveled. It reduces vehicle miles traveled even more when there are commercial areas with the mixed use that is available.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Fox.
Hi, Kate Fox, Libin Davis is bill chair of the GAN Legislative Committee. As I said last meeting to you, there's much to like about this bill. The requirement in the previous redevelopment bill for a community meeting before concept plan submittal was something that GAN's advocated for. We appreciate it that it was retained in the bill. We also appreciate that this bill will take effect concurrent with the Housing Attainability Act. And finally, we appreciate the environmental protections of not developing more greenfields and requiring upgrades to stormwater management. Briefly, I just want to say that we've done a cursory review of the proposed amendments for tonight, and we believe that GAN can support Amendments Number Two, Five, and Six. There are other amendments we will need to discuss with the GAN Legislative Committee, and we'll get back to you. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, I'm Mia Schreier, I am a resident in Edgewater, and greatly concerned about this bill that is about to be talked about, or here. Edgewater, the Route Two, as well as Two-fourteen area, is greatly over-trafficked by all of the bedroom communities throughout the area that are coming and going on Route Two. In this bill, it, it did not identify anything to be blighted or vacant. There are areas in Edgewater which could be developed, however, it is not stated in this bill, as we are reading it, as to which those particular buildings in those areas will be. And if, the map that was here previously, if it could be, if there's a greater map which identifies the areas that are to be developed in the Edgewater area, someone had mentioned the Old Giant, which I believe the county has taken over and is going to be a recreation center, but it's not been identified which areas are actually going to be built upon. The Pike Ridge and Route Two area is already under legislation or under development with the county zoning, to put another townhome development in there, the Greenlife Community, that is not yet developed, but yet that zoning has gone through a neighborhood that is a dead-end community. So it seems like this is a, kind of a recurrence, where there's development going into a community that already exists, that is a dead-end area. So I don't believe that the development plan is, is being completely open with the community.
Thank you. All right, if anyone else who would, wishes to come speak at this time?
Good evening again, Matt Minahan, Edgewater, Maryland, Chair of the Growth Action Network. Listen, we think 225 is a smart bill, we think it's a targeted bill, we think it's an effective bill, and we hope it receives unanimous approval at the council. It's particularly important that it repurposes gray and brown fields that otherwise are environmental challenges to the county. And the requirements of this bill to improve the environmental protections and improve the stormwater are important elements here, and I think a great asset to the redevelopment process. As Kate mentioned earlier, an early read of the amendments, we think that Amendment Two, to include this to mixed-use developments, we think is really important, and we support. Amendment Five, adding the community meeting, we definitely appreciate that and would support that. And Amendment Six, to include the C-four zones, we think are really important. Not only that, but in addition to what the bill includes, rather than limiting where it should apply, we think it should be expanded to more areas than just the targeted areas. There are areas for redevelopment in parts of the county way beyond what we're talking about in this bill, and to have it as tightly focused and as limited as it is, seems counterproductive to me. There are other parts in the code, other elements, the addition of transit will help to, to address some of the congestion concerns, and so we would encourage you to consider expanding the footprint of this bill, not reducing it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Minahan. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Mike Cardozo, I'm a resident of Severna Park. I'd like to express my support for the amendment proposed by Councilwoman Fiedler. As the councilwoman knows, I, after purchasing my first home in Severna Park in May twenty twenty-three, have had quite an introduction to stormwater drainage, and learned more than I ever cared to about it, after several floods and, and a lot of water damage. And while I second my support for the, my fellow residents of Severna Park about the community charm and other more obvious issues, I would like to highlight specifically the stormwater runoff issue, specific to the area below Old County Road, adjacent to the BNA Trail, which is directly abutting the critical corridor. This particular area receives an enormous amount of groundwater from Old County Road, and cannot sustain it. The impervious surfaces there cannot tolerate any of the groundwater drainage, and the impact is becoming clear with septic systems, which is obviously a big priority for the county. On our street, we have septic systems that are becoming infiltrated, and what I have learned after being immersed in this, is that there's a real threat to the environment, which we all care about, the Severna-Magathie watersheds are at significant risk in this area. And so I just wanted to highlight a little bit different perspective on my support for the amendment, based on the potential pollution and lack of stormwater infrastructure. the amendment based on the potential pollution and lack of stormwater infrastructure in this area. And I'd be remiss not to mention, the county stormwater department has been phenomenal, very engaged with me, has been out multiple times, and I've been pleasantly surprised by the receptiveness of the county on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing on Bill Number 225 as amended is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 225 as amended.
Bill Number 225, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Zoning Development Requirements for Particular Types of Development/Redevelopment.
Okay. All right. We have eight amendments. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Two.
Amendment Number Two, this amendment makes the redevelopment provisions added to Article 17 Title VII applicable to the mixed-use overlay policy area and the corridor revitalization and redevelopment overlay policy area.
Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So that's exactly what this amendment does. It does expand it slightly and includes the mixed-use overlay policy areas for the, and the corridor revitalization and redevelopment overlay policy areas in the policy areas that are eligible to use the provisions of the redevelopment bill.
May I have a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Okay, second?
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion? Ms. Radbien.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, that was from the second. I would just say I support this amendment because I, I think like Mr. Evelyn, I actually would love to see this policy countywide. Or actually, I'm not sure who said that, but I would gladly see this policy countywide.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know we were sharing maps earlier. I didn't know if there was one that could be shared for folks in the room.
Yeah.
For these policies.
That it changes.
Oh, okay. I'm kidding. Okay. Thank you for having that.
Do you want to make any comment on this before, Ms. Pickard?
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. These, I believe when we were reviewing the expansion of these development policy areas, they're mostly parcels that are already contained in other development policy areas with a few straggler areas. Is that right?
Turn it over to Lynn.
Yes, that's correct, Councilwoman.
You have a pointer? Look at him. He's gonna, somebody, who's gonna chase it around?
Can't have an eye cloth.
Will it show on the screen? No.
No.
Good try. Good try. All right.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Fiedler.
Just to clarify, since we're looking at an amendment, the mixed-use overlay policy area, I don't see it's on the legend here.
Right. Sorry, this is, this is the, this is the map as the bill currently is. Right.
Okay.
Yeah. A lot of the mixed use are within these policy areas.
Okay, but we don't have a map that shows the areas in the amendment.
We don't, but we could get one.
Okay.
We can get you one if you'd like.
Ms. Ledbetter.
I was gonna ask the same question as Ms. Fiedler. If I could see a map to see specifically where these are, that would be very helpful.
Lynn, if you want to add anything about where these areas are.
Um, the majority of the areas currently that are designated as either a mixed-use overlay policy area or a corridor revitalization and redevelopment policy area are already applicable within the bill because they're located on top of either a critical corridor, a critical economic area, a town center, a commercial revitalization district, or some, some other geographic area that the bill is already applicable to. So adding these currently is not going to have a huge impact, but in our minds, it makes sense to add them in case some of these areas in the future are mapped and are, would most likely be, fall within the goal of the bill's applicability.
Thank you. Can you tell me specifically if either of these overlap the critical corridor on Route Three or the critical corridor on Route Two in Edgewater specifically? Not the northern portion of Two?
I, I don't believe that there's a mixed-use overlay policy area there. I'm not sure about the corridor revitalization redevelopment area.
Thank you.
Ms. Fiedler.
Sorry, I see the administration looking at Plan 2040. If you could direct me to a page, I have it in front of me on my computer. Page 39.
Are there any other comments or questions regarding this amendment? It, it appears that this does not expand it greatly, but it does expand somewhat to more applicable areas. And I think that is something that, that we have been hearing, like from our friends at GAN, that to make this applicable for more areas of the county to take advantage of. So. All right. If there are no further comments or discussion, Mr. Smith?
Mine's short. I am in favor of redevelopment in District One. Obviously, it's largely developed. If there are future amendments, I think if we can discuss those in advance because a large part of this bill impacts District One. And I just don't recall having any conversations about any of the amendments here recently. And so we appreciate if the administration would still take that into consideration because a lot of these land use bills are significantly altering the landscape in my district. So, thank you.
If there are no further discussions on this, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Two.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Just don't have enough information to, other than nay.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Radbien.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative, Amendment Number Two has been adopted.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Three.
Amendment Number Three, this amendment allows county agencies with interest in a code provision, regulation, manual, or specification, including the DPW design manual and the landscape manual, to make recommendations on modifications to those code provisions, regulations, manuals, or specifications.
Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I know that was a mouthful, but this is really a belt and suspenders type of amendment. So what it's saying is that if a request for a modification comes to OPZ, and that request involves another provision of the code that touches another department like DPW, like the design manual, that that modification cannot be granted without first running it by DPW and DPW making that recommendation in favor of that modification. So it's a practice we already do, and it's just putting it in the code right here.
Okay. All right. Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we have to codify your existing policy practice of how the different departments interact with each other?
This was a request from DPW, yes. They wanted to make sure that this practice continued because administrations change.
And just so that I'm understanding correctly, so this will ultimately put DPW as the final authority on whether these changes get made or not?
It's, they would, they would not be the final authority. It would just be on, on the provision that would impact them on DP, that would impact DPW or another department or agency, county government, but most, most frequently DPW.
Yeah, like what? I just don't understand. I mean, here's how I look at it, just to kind of give you my thinking. The administration operates how the administration operates. This administration operates the way it does internally. The next administration, whatever they may be, may operate a different way. We're gonna codify something to talk about how the different parts of the administration have to interact with each other? That just seems unusual to me. Like, that's, that's policy. That's you all deciding how to run the government. That's what the people elected you to do. Why are we getting in the middle of that? Normally, we're setting rules for citizens or what people have to do interacting with other people, but this one seems strange.
I, I understand your question. If you look at what's currently in the, in the bill as drafted, it talks about subject to, paragraph two for redevelopment application. The PZO may approve an application for a modification. And so, but if you go and look at the various sub-paragraphs, it talks about specifically the PZO authorizing or approving the application for any applicable regulations, including the DPW design manual and the landscape manual. And, and, and I understand what you're saying in terms of like, that's a, a policy and procedure, but you have these, these land use agencies, not all of them necessarily have a proven authority, but you have the PZO who's responsible for planning zoning, and yet she has to approve essentially another agency's, they're the ones that have the subject matter expertise. So all we're doing in this one is ensuring that, that, that we have the appropriate transparency and that it's codified in the sense that if it's implicating the landscape manual or design manual, that we just confer with, with that particular agency. So I, I mean, I don't think there's anything that this, that the administration's gonna say that will, that will satiate your question, but that's just, that was something when we just, when we workshopped this bill with staff, specifically some of the other agencies, they were like, they wanted this. And so we decided to include this.
I mean, don't they all report to you? Well, I, I understand. I wasn't trying to flip with that, but like county exec, CAO, deputy CAO for land use, I think that's you. So all of those land use departments kind of funnel up to you. So to the extent that someone in one department is doing something that's causing a problem for another department, it would seem like that's where you get in and say, hey, stop doing that. We're gonna sort of make a policy in a particular way to say this is what's gonna happen. I'm just not sure why it's in the code.
I, I hear what you're saying, but you, but one of the things that we do is we look at how do you improve efficiencies, whether it's via policy and procedure or whether it's to the code. And this is when we were doing it through the code.
All right.
Are there any other comments or questions on this amendment? All right. Madam Secretary, please, oh, wait, we did not motion to adopt. I'm sorry, I skipped that. May I have a motion to adopt? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Now, is there any additional discussion? I kind of skipped a step there. All right. Madam Sec, what? Yes, Ms. Pickard.
I just want to say I agree. I don't often agree, but more often than not, I agree with my colleague. So if that is helpful to anybody, this is a weird amendment that is strange.
All right. Madam Secretary, oh, Ms. Radbien.
I was going to just say, we also often agree, but I disagree on this one. I actually like this amendment. It basically is saying, and I think the public benefits from conversations between different departments. And so I'm perfectly fine with that being codified and not left to the sort of policy discretion of a future administration. We're putting this, this piece in, this required communication that in theory should benefit the public, will benefit the public.
All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Three.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Nay.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Radbien.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Three in the affirmative, four in the negative, Amendment Number Three has been defeated.
Okay. All right. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Four.
Amendment Number Four, this amendment provides that properties in a critical corridor policy area where a portion of the areas does, is, excuse me, is designed as, excuse me, designated, no, designed, I'm sorry, as mixed-use planned use is recommended for a sector plan and study are not subject to the provisions of this bill.
All right. Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Talked about this during our previous discussion on the bill at our last public legislative meeting. When we were working on region for, this council supported an amendment that I had with regard to the underlying land use of this commercial area not matching the zoning. And I did an amendment that added language that the zoning for this commercial area of Severna Park would not change without a sector study. And part of the reason for that is the ongoing issue that we have with traffic, as was mentioned tonight. I regularly hear from residents in the Severna Park area about McKenzie and Cypress Creek backups into actual travel lanes and the turn lanes. And when reaching out to SHA, they do at times adjust the timing of lights, but their response is often to me, it's just a matter of volume and capacity. So with that and understanding that this area will likely have a sector study in the future that will study things like traffic and housing capacity potential, I ask for your support of this amendment this evening. And I move the amendment forward.
Second.
Administration, do you have any comments on this bill?
I feel the administration has spoken at length about our position around redevelopment. And as a tool, I will just reiterate what the county executive noted, that, that while we think it's something that should be applied countywide, council members know their districts. And, and as the administration's sincere hopes that they make wise decisions about how this redevelopment tool and where this redevelopment tool should be applied. With that, the administration takes no position.
I have a question for you, Ms. Fiedler.
Sure.
So this says that this, that would not apply to areas that are recommended for a sector study or a study in a region plan. Does this leave open the door that, that a sector plan or study could recommend that this bill then apply to it in the future if that were to come out?
Not under this bill. I think what I envision the potential happening in this area is that a sector study is completed at some point in time, whether it be for a change in zoning to mixed use or a reconsideration of this area being added back into the code if this bill passes. But it would not allow it to happen without a legislative action, I don't believe. Ms. Passmeyer might agree with me.
So, it does, I mean, but it, it doesn't close the door to this area, you know, in the future. I mean, it's, it's based on what a study would come through.
It does, it does not close the door. And I will just add into this discussion, I think that you've seen from the testimony tonight that residents in Severna Park care very deeply about the characteristic, the feel. And I can almost guarantee that if, I can almost guarantee that if the shopping center area does become blighted and vacant, that residents will be calling for the ability to do something in this property. But I don't, we're not there at this point in time, and I think that that's something that we could definitely look at in the future.
Ms. Pickard.
Can we, when, as we, we have several amendments that want to remove certain areas of the county out of applicability to this bill without, if, if this bill, if this, if this amendment were to pass, someone could still go in and redevelop any part of this They're just gonna not receive any benefit with no, so that means they don't have to do a concept plan and present it to the community at the early stage. They just go through the regular development process. There's some added benefit to a redevelopment project falling under these provisions that are early in the process, 3D massing concept plans that the community can see and weigh in on. that the community can see and weigh in on earlier than a traditional project.
But as part of, in response to some excessive, not excessive, the extreme amount of testimony we received, I do want to say something before we get started as we talk about this, just different areas, because I just can't let this not go. And this, I read every bit of testimony that has been submitted, and some of it I felt expressed misinformation, and I've tried very hard to respond to people and correct that or to give my views on it. The vast majority of everything we received were very, were sharing sincere concerns about possible impacts on schools, traffic, and the environment. And I welcome that feedback, and I thank you all for sharing. And I want to stress that that was the vast majority that we received. However, I also received a few emails that were very clearly advocating against this bill because of concerns that certain types of people would move into their communities. And let me be clear, when you reach out to me and rail against people of certain incomes or ethnicity, that is not helping you in your arguments. I give them zero weight. I'm going to vote based on what I believe is the best option for the current and future needs of the county economically. I am not going to be voting to protect or segregate certain portions of our county because a few people do not want to live near people who don't look like them. So, again, I thank the vast majority of residents who shared sincere valid concerns, but I condemn the few who felt emboldened to put their prejudices in writing. And so, as we move forward, I want to stress that I and I believe all my colleagues are going to be voting for what we believe is best for this county economically today and for the future, and not based on the prejudices of a few. Are there any other comments on bill, amendment number four? So, Madam Secretary, please recall the role. I've lost my place.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
As someone who has a couple of sector plans, aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodbien.
Nay.
And Ms. Hummer.
Nay.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative, amendment number four has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please, where are we? Hold on, I lost my page. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number five.
Amendment number five, this amendment requires a developer to hold a community meeting after the submission of a final plan or site development plan.
All right. This is my amendment, and this is based on that, the large amount of testimony that we received. One thing that I heard from a number of people was that they wished for an additional public meeting where they could share information. So, this is an amendment that does provide for an additional community meeting to be held after the submission of final plan or site development plan. And so, I ask for my colleagues' support on this, motion to adopt.
Second.
Okay. Administration?
Madam Chair, you know, you and I, we discussed this amendment. Obviously, when the administration put this bill in, we were trying to, because there's so much cost that comes along with redevelopment, whether it's demolition, et cetera, and we were trying to find ways to make it as expeditious as possible because sometimes the development review process, that has a financial impact as well. However, I know that there are many of our, many of the advocates that we have sat with and discussed this bill, they have been looking for more community input. And if this is done in a way that does not dramatically increase the review process, then the administration can get behind it.
Okay. Are there any other comments or discussion from my colleagues? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the role on amendment.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodbien.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer. Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, amendment number five has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number.
Amendment number six, this amendment provides for a density limit under certain circumstances in C four, removes commercial use requirements in C one, C two, and C three for redevelopment under certain circumstances, and provides for maximum density for townhouses and stacked townhouses in development and redevelopment projects.
Ms. Pickard, this is your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is part two of the amendment the council passed at the last meeting. We needed to adjust another section of the code. The code currently allows for residential development in C one through C three. Since we added C four to the redevelopment bill, we're just following through on that provision so that we are making sure those corner gas stations that everyone wants to see turned into something cool can happen. But it is just part two, following through on part one of an amendment we passed unanimously at the last meeting. Motion to adopt.
All right. Administration?
Yes, this is a, we've had an opportunity, myself, O B Z staff, we've had an opportunity to discuss this with Councilmember Pickard and the administration supports.
Is there any other discussion by my colleagues? Ms. Ledbetter.
Thank you. Ms. Pickard, if you could just clarify, provides for a density limit under certain circumstances. What is the limit and the circumstances, if you could just speak to that?
I'm sure Ms. Lynn Miller would like to help me out with this. I'm going to phone a friend.
Or someone at the table. I didn't intend to, I didn't mean to put you on the.
It's what's already drafted in the code.
I just thought it would be good to clarify for the record.
Lynn Miller, well, the circumstances are if it's a redevelopment project, and the density that's being added is for the C four district, it's being treated the same as the C three district, both in general and for purposes of redevelopment.
So, up to R twenty-two?
Up to R fifteen.
R fifteen.
In general, and R twenty-two if redevelopment.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
And lastly, for the bottom half of the amendment, maybe the sponsor or Ms. Lynn could weigh in, to your striking, the requirement for the fifty percent of the floor area in District four to, oh, you're just eliminating all three of those lines, so it'll be zero. Is that correct?
Councilmember Smith, if I understand your question, well, currently in the code, in the C one through C three districts, if you are developing multifamily uses, you also have a commercial floor area component requirement. This bill adds the same for C four. Also, this bill for a redevelopment project as an additional incentive allows that you can redevelop with multifamily without that commercial floor area component. However, this amendment keeps the commercial floor area component in place in the C four district.
So, you can't, so we, there is a need for commercial. We don't want all redevelopment to be all residential in C four. It is our most intense.
Yes.
Commercial space. So, we are keeping the commercial component when you're redeveloping in, or the percentage in C four.
But in C one, C two, C three, you remove it?
Not with this amendment. That already exists in the bill and in the code.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith, do you have any more further questions? Okay. All right, everybody good? All right, Madam Secretary, please call the role on amendment number six.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Nay.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodbien.
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative, amendment number six has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number seven.
Amendment number seven, this amendment provides that the provisions of this ordinance do not apply to properties located in region planning areas eight and nine of Plan 2040.
Ledbetter, your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I have, through the process of region planning, just being out in my community, and then the communications I've received recently, heard repeatedly from constituents within these two regions, and really throughout my district, to be honest. They, I want to be clear, the constituents I have spoken to, they do understand this bill. They understand that it is targeting existing commercial areas. They understand that that is better than developing greenfields. Where the disconnect is, is the incentives that are provided in this bill that would increase the allowable residential density and reduce the commercial uses. That is something that does not fit the vision of the small-town and rural feel of these two regions. And there are concerns about the infrastructure being able to handle it. They understand that there's adequate public facilities tests. I have discussed that with them. But there is still a general consensus that developing high, having the incentive to go higher in density than code already allows and reduce commercial uses is just not something that they're interested in. So, this would remove regions eight and regions nine. To be clear, both of those regions fall 100% within councilmatic District seven. Region nine begins south, just on the south side of the south of a bridge, and it includes the coastal areas of my district. And then, region nine is the inland portion of South County. So, think Lothian, Harwood, Davinsonville. I know that there's not any of those areas currently on the map, but this was something that made my constituents that I spoke to feel really comfortable. And since it's not a net loss or change to the bill, decided to put the both together. So, motion to adopt.
Second.
Administration?
As Councilmember Ledbetter just mentioned, as you see when you look at the map, this doesn't impact the current legislation. So, I can say we don't care, but I'll just say we don't oppose.
It does include a portion in Edgewater. Ms. Pickard.
So, just to be clear, the county has invested in a vacant, large-box anchor store to redevelop it into a higher, with higher and best use. So, we're investing tax dollars to redevelop in this corridor. But we're going to, by this amendment, we're going to remove the opportunity for the private sector to invest in this corridor where there could be an opportunity in the next decade to bring in something vibrant that could improve the community. Okay?
I just want to be clear, I am sorry, when I looked at the map, I did not see, I did not see it. So, with that said, again, I go back to what the county executive said with respects to council members in the council mag district. But as Councilmember Pickard noted, by removal of that corridor, it doesn't fully align with our policy orientation that we've discussed, that I've discussed extensively in Plan 2040.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Yes, to be clear, the, it's the old giant. It is being redeveloped into a recreation center. The community is very excited about that. If that conversation were about that facility being redeveloped into high-density, 100% housing, the community would feel differently. It's my understanding.
Sure. And I'm done.
So, I want to stress again that what we talked about earlier is that a big, along with redevelopment that we want to pursue, we also have a commitment to maintaining the character of neighborhoods. So, a neighborhood that does not have that is not going to suddenly be approved to have multi-story apartment buildings in the middle of a neighborhood, of a community that's there. And again, I see the point that Ms. Pickard raised, that it's okay to do the redevelopment on something that's not there if it's going to be the tax dollars, our own tax dollars coming in to benefit, but not otherwise. I just think that this is very limiting to have it, to shut this down for all possibilities in the future for what's coming through. Because as Ms. Ledbetter said, the community is really excited about the community center. That's the kind of redevelopment we're hoping to get with this, is these underused, underutilized spaces to be reimagined for something great for the community. And that can be done by the county, as we're doing, or it can also be done for the private sector and by the private sector. And I am hesitant to shut that door for the future of this area. Any other comments or discussions? Ms. Ledbetter.
I'm confident that if the constituents in regions eight and nine ever wanted to revisit these opportunities in a way that did not incentivize high-density housing, that they would be willing and probably ask me to come to the table to revisit what that might look like in legislative form, should that time come.
Ms. Rodbien.
Thank you. As the representative of District six, of District six, which has quite a bit of high-density housing, I'm rather frustrated to hear the continuing opposition to high-density housing because we need it, and it's what will protect the environment. If we need more housing, we can either continue to spread it out in sprawl and develop every last green space and cut down every last tree to make it a suburban whatever, or we can build up. But the reality is, we need housing in Anarundel County. I think one of the gentlemen from the Realtors Association mentioned that the first, the home, the first, the average age for a first-time homebuyer is now 38 years old. That's crazy. I mean, that's crazy. You know, that, we've got to do better. We're basically cutting off a younger generation from being able to participate in anything resembling the American dream. And we're making it hard for people, for young people, to move back to this area. People that grew up here now have to move away because they can't afford to live here because we're not building enough housing, and we have a supply problem. So, yes, I agree that we need, you know, non-market-based solutions, but we also need market-based solutions, and this creates them. And the hostility towards high-density housing is something we have to get over. Yes, we would all love to have a giant wooded trail next to our home, but we can't all have that if we're going to have neighbors who can work the jobs that are in our county and, you know, continue to have a vibrant economy. I bring up the example of Key West, Florida, who has such a dire housing shortage. Now, thankfully, we're not nearly as dire as Key West, Florida. But Key West, Florida, as you can imagine from the geography, has nowhere left to build. And their housing shortage is so dire that businesses have to close because they have no workers. So, restaurants in Key West have shut down. Hotels in Key West have shut down because there are not enough places for people to live. And we can't just, you know, pretend that we're, we have to keep the balance. It's much easier in Anarundel County. We do have the peninsula issue, which can, you know, make getting around tricky. But we can't, we can't just, you know, cut off every opportunity to, you know, to kind of incentivize higher-density housing. We need it. We need to stop being hostile to it. I hope that, I hope the community at large can understand that younger people I hope the community at large can understand that younger people deserve what they have too.
And I just want to add that high-density housing is already allowed in these corridors under the current code at R-15. There's just an incentive to add a modest to R-22, which is about another story on a building. So this is, the high-density housing is already allowed in these areas. So, any? Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number seven.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radbien.
Nay.
And Ms. Hummer.
Nay.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative, amendment number seven has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number eight.
Amendment number eight, this amendment provides that properties in a transit-oriented overlay policy area or critical economic policy area in region five, council-matic district seven, are not subject to the provisions of this ordinance.
Ms. Ledbetter, this is your amendment.
Similar conversations, I'm not going to repeat myself from the previous amendment. The constituents in this area do understand the bill. There was still an objection to the increased incentive of the higher density and the reduced commercial uses, but additionally for just these two particular overlays, I spent quite a bit of time trying to look on GIS to determine exactly where they were, and it actually changed at one point, which made me uncomfortable including these when I'm actually seeing different things on the maps at different times. And so, one of the reasons I decided to move forward with this amendment, motion to adopt.
Administration?
I've, I've had an opportunity to speak with council member Ledbetter on this amendment. Again, the county executive, the administration, we want this bill to apply in those policy areas that was specified in our GDP, and, and I'd probably just, I can, I would probably just incorporate much of the positions, arguments that, that council member Radbien, council member Hummer, council member Pickard noted earlier, and, and save us all a bit of time. But, so from, from that perspective, the administration opposes this amendment.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So can I, can we just talk about where this actually is? Because this says it's located in a transit-oriented overlay, so we're looking, we want to remove the opportunity for redevelopment where we actually are trying to produce transit, to reduce traffic? I mean, if we're, right, is that what we're saying? Where is this?
So, hold on, give me a moment to pull it up on the map, so I can be specific.
Councilwoman Pickard.
Where is it in the county?
While, Ms.
Crofton.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to note that, as written, this applies within region five, council-matic district seven, which does narrow it to the Crofton area. There are not any TOD overlay policy areas or critical economic policy areas in Crofton. So we were not sure what this amendment was meant to accomplish.
Completely appreciate that. It was, I looked at the maps earlier this morning, and it was confusing to me, too, because I was surprised to see particularly the transit overlay in one particular area where the actual underlying land use was RA even. So I don't know if there was some sort of glitch. It was very confusing for me as well. So I drafted this in an abundance of caution, but if you're saying on the record, there are, these two areas do not exist within region five, council-matic district seven, then I will withdraw the amendment.
Yes, that's correct.
All right, thank you. Withdraw the amendment, then. Thank you, Mr. Volkey.
Read amendment number nine.
Amendment number nine, this amendment provides that properties in a critical corridor policy area in region five are not subject to the provisions of this ordinance.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Thank you. Again, same comments from constituents, they do understand the provisions of the bill. There was still from my constituents who live in the Crofton area along that Route Three corridor, extreme concern about further incentivizing residential development at high densities that would eliminate commercial uses. At the same time, this would apply to the critical corridor that is from the PG County line up to 97, based on the feedback I've received from my constituents. Motion to adopt. Prince George's. Thank you, Mr. Volkey.
Administration? They do. Administration?
Yes, someone from Prince George's County. Yes. So the administration opposes this. I mean, when you look at what a critical corridor is, improvements, whether it's done via redevelopment or revitalization, allows that area, which is a, again, it's an economic corridor, and it's one that we can, as we're looking to build more, more sustainable and resilient communities, it affords us an opportunity to lean more towards multimodal and whatnot. So, so, so to, so to agree to remove this particular amendment, or from the administration's perspective, again, it goes so contrary to the principles of Plan 2040 and how we, how we want smart growth to look in this county going forward.
I have a question for the sponsor. Ms. Ledbetter, you said this would apply from the Prince George's County line to 197. It does not specify that in this amendment. It says region, in region planning area number five entirety?
Based on my understanding, this is, that, that Route Three is the only critical corridor in region five?
Correct. And a large portion of region five is my district as well, and I'm not supportive of this. I believe that is a critical corridor, and that we need the entire thing to be available for the changes in growth. I just came from a meeting about Route Three with hundreds of people in attendance, and we're looking at ways to improve that corridor all along and to break it into parts. But as I said, a large portion of this region five in that critical corridor is district four, and this is not one I can support for my district. Questions or discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number nine.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Nay.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Mr. Volkey.
Nay.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radbien.
Nay.
And Ms. Hummer.
Nay.
Two in the affirmative, five in the negative, amendment number nine has failed.
All right. It's the last one, isn't it?
Madam Chair, we have another amendment that will be coming out from our deputy administrative officer in just a moment.
Yes, so.
That is separate, that is separate from what you have in your notes in your script.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I was about to share what was in my notes, but I hear that's something separate, something different that's coming out. Okay. Okay. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number 10.
Amendment number 10, this amendment provides that properties in a critical corridor policy area in region five, council-matic district seven, are not subject to the provisions of this ordinance.
Okay. Ms. Ledbetter, this is your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This amendment respects the fact that part of that Route Three corridor is in council-matic district four, and it would only apply to the portion of the corridor that is in region five, council-matic district seven. Geographically, that goes only on the eastbound side, or, sorry, it would be on, when you're traveling north on Route Three to your east, from the PG County line up to the Rydell Road with Route Three intersection.
Prince George's.
Did I say it again? It's, I'm sorry, it's too many years living in, in a, apologies, Prince George's. Old habits are hard to break sometimes. I do not mean any disrespect to Prince George's County or the residents thereof. Motion to adopt.
Second.
Administration?
The same reasons we opposed it for amendment nine, I'll just incorporate by reference.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So if I'm looking at the council districts correctly, I think this impacts seven, the way it's drafted, but, you know, you're all right there, right? Four is there, five's got a piece of this, and it even looks like a piece of district six is in there, too. So they're all in this critical corridor running up there. Now, I recognize this is a more narrow version of that amendment that only impacts the portion that looks like basically from Johns Hopkins Road where it intersects Route Three toward the Prince George's County line.
Yes.
That's what I'm seeing.
Yes, Johns Hopkins, I apologize.
Okay. So that's, that's what it appears to be, because this moves the line from 97 much further to the west and the south, to bring it only into your district. So I just, I just wanted to clarify that, because I.
Thank you, Mr. Volkey.
While I, I recognize the chair's comments on the last amendment and the fact that it impacted the two of you, the other two people who didn't speak up were Ms. Radbien and Ms. Fiedler, who both have pieces of this as well. So that was part of why I didn't like the last amendment, because it was too broad, and it's sort of tough to pick which of the four of you to listen to, even if, even if not everybody responds, so.
Which I do respect. So that's why I did tailor this, to just be in
Yeah.
my council-matic districts, so that I am advocating for the constituents in my district that I've heard from.
Okay. But it definitely seems like this, from the way I'm looking at the map, doesn't look like this impacts your district very much, the way this is drafted now, because it looks like most of that Route Three corridor really sits in the chair's district, and to a degree, yeah, I mean, even further up, where her district crosses over Route Three and comes sort of to the north of your district. It looks like she's got most of it, so.
That would be, I would agree with that. It's, this is a very narrow, precise geographic area.
Okay, all right.
Ms. Pickard.
I appreciate the notion of council-matic courtesy to a point. But we don't live by district lines. We don't shop by district lines. I'm allowed to drive through Crofton to get to where I need to go for soccer practice. So it's just sort of strange that we're going to say, one half of the street will have the benefit of some redevelopment if a shopping center goes south, but the other half of the street isn't in the applicable zone. Are we, this is getting a little, a little nuts, right? Just, I mean, we're not, we don't take our passports across district lines and say, oh, now I'm in Councilwoman Pickard's district, where I really want redevelopment and revitalization, so maybe I'll, maybe I should strengthen the bill in my district through some amendments that don't apply anywhere else in the county, because when we don't have, when we don't have rental units anywhere else in the county, everyone's going to live in Glen Burnie or Baltimore City, because that's where we are allowing redevelopment and revitalization. So I don't know where everybody's kids are going to live. I don't know what everyone's housing story is, but I know rental, high-quality, safe, nice rental was always part of my launch. I didn't come out of the womb owning a single-family home. So where are our children going to be allowed to launch if we don't allow some flexibility where we build housing, or just vibrant, new, modern, commercial retail spaces? This has been an interesting exercise, and I can't support this amendment.
Mr. Smith?
I was simply going to say, as, as one who's certainly in favor of redevelopment in District One, I'm supportive of the bill in general. However, we've, we've taken, when you look at the map on the screen already, we've already made a determination to determine where development goes throughout the county, even before the bill even came to us. And so while I am not, certainly interested in, you know, impacting areas throughout the county that other elected representatives were chosen to, to represent, I, I do, I do find solace in, you do represent Glen Burnie, and I do value how you want Glen Burnie to be developed and built. And so while I certainly wouldn't recommend everything on Mrs. Ledbetter's district to be removed, I do think she represents a constituency that is speaking to her, just like I have people in District One who speaks to me. And so the good thing about laws and bills is, as we progress forward in the future, they evolve. This isn't one stop or one snapshot at this bill. As we develop, we expand, we keep going. And so I'm not necessarily in favor of her, her decision to remove her area, but I also recognize that South County has elected someone to represent them. And so I'm supportive of the amendment, and I'm okay with redevelopment being in District One. So that's one.
Mr. Volkey.
I just wanted you to know, Ms. Pickard, that when I'm in your district, I think I'm in Ms. Pickard's district. How would you know that?
Well, behave yourself when you're in my district. Ms. Radbien?
I will actually admit the same thing. When I drive around the county, I'm like, oh, I'm in District Seven, I'm in District Five, I'm in District Three. I spend a lot of time in District Five and Seven, because they're my neighbors. But anyway, what, what I'm really concerned about in this conversation is, you know, we have heard from a lot of folks, I think between the testimony tool and other emails, we responded to like close to 170 in my office over the past 24 hours, which, you know, really doing our best to keep on track, and unfortunately having to use mass email to just communicate with everyone with the time allotted. But that's only 170 out of a county with close, with 600,000 people. And so I think it's really important to remember that not every single one of our constituents is going to reach out and share their voice, and that doesn't mean that they should not be part of this conversation. As everyone in the room knows, Annapolis has a fair amount of poverty. There are a lot of people in Annapolis that would love to get out, you know, and, and be able to live someplace nicer, but they cannot afford to, because there aren't places that are affordable. And even though, I don't think I've heard from a single one of those folks, I still represent them, and I'm going to be their voice. And I'm going to say, you know what, we have to make places for everyone, including folks that right now aren't even at the table. So I'm pulling up the chair, and I'm saying, even though I don't see you in the chair, because you, you, whatever, you're working two jobs, you're trying to make ends meet, you deserve a seat at this table, and I'm going to make sure you get one, and not cut you out of every possible neighborhood in the county. So I really hate these amendments. I'm sorry. I just have to be blunt, I hate them. I feel like they're just, they're just, they're cutting off people that don't have opportunity and don't have a voice, and that's not the way we should make legislation.
Ms. Ledbetter? So I'm just going to add back, I appreciate Ms. Ledbetter's attempt to separate out her district from this, but the fact remains that this is a critical corridor. It is long, it is connected, and what her amendment would do would gerrymander this corridor, so that one side of the road would fall under this bill and have the provisions and the opportunities there, and the other side would not. These are all interconnected. Ms. Ledbetter and I attend ribbon cuttings in that area together. I attend ribbon cuttings in that area together all the time, because that's how interconnected is. In the median, down the middle of Route 3, we're never even quite sure whose district those businesses are in, because of the way that the lines fall. So this would be, we truly would have a gerrymandered demarcation down the middle that would impact all, my district, her district, District 6, District 5, because that corridor goes down, and it's, and it's everyone. And I just, I, I don't think we should have separate rules for one side of the street than the other. And that's what this bill does. We, it needs to be consistent, we need to look to be enhancing and making this corridor the best that it can be, the whole corridor, not one half of the corridor, because the other half doesn't want to see anything else be built. I don't think that that is good policy for the county. I know it's not good policy for my district, so I will not be supporting this.
Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll on Amendment Number 10?
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Nay.
And Ms. Hummer?
Nay.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Amendment Number 10 has been adopted.
Now, okay. Now we are going to take a brief recess while a conforming amendment to take together some of these that passed is brought together. So we are going to, may I have a motion to take a five-minute recess?
Motion to take a five-minute recess.
Second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We will return in five minutes or so. All right. We are back in session, and Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 11.
Amendment Number 11. This amendment conforms the language in the ordinance to Amendments 4, 7, and 10 as adopted by the council.
So, wait a minute, where am I? So, Ms. Fiedler and Ms. Ledbetter, this is your amendments.
Summary was pretty accurate, motion to adopt.
Second.
Okay. Administration?
We're opposed.
Okay. Then, any comments from my colleagues? All right.
I'm sorry, can you explain, in layman's terms, what this is doing?
Sure. Because of the way that the amendments were introduced and passed without this, the amendment for Severna Park is no longer. So this brings the two amendments that passed together, three amendments, I'm sorry, that passed together. So we're essentially voting on the three amendments that passed prior in one amendment.
It's a conforming amendment, it's similar to a technical amendment, but it's not technical, because it's substantive. Does that make sense? So it just cleans it up.
All right. Any other comments, Ms. Fiedler? Okay.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I, I just actually want to clarify, what's the result of a no, if this amendment fails? What's the result of this amendment failing?
Ms. Beach? No, wait a minute. No, that's incorrect. Because we did not pass the amendment for the number 3 on this, okay. We did not pass that amendment, that-
That was, it was Number 10, which was the last amendment that you did.
Oh, that one we did, okay.
It was Region 5.
All right, I'm sorry, I was reading it wrong. Okay. So this, but if we did not pass this amendment, then this nullifies those other amendments.
It would nullify the 4 and 7, and 10 would stand.
It's-
Those are all separate.
No.
Because the way that they were drafted, they were, they, they replaced, they would replace each other, because the later-in-time rule, the last approved amendment would override the previous two.
It's just like when we do budget. It's just like, it's just like when we do budget, and we pass a bunch of, a bunch of amendments. If they don't all build on each other, and each of the subsequent amendments, then something new comes in and wipes out all the old stuff. So this just makes it so that they all get cleaned up.
Okay. Ms. Fiedler.
Are we all in agreement?
Do we all understand what we're voting on? Okay.
What does the Office of Law have to say?
Yeah.
I'm not sure I 100% agree that this is necessary, because we often do amendments that affect the same parts of the bill, and they become conformed. It, it, I mean, if they're all passed at the same legislative session, as opposed to, to having to pass them at separate legislative sessions, I, I think that they just, they are conformed for codification purposes. But it's a, I think it's a belts and suspenders issue. I mean, I think if you pass this, I think it would have the same effect, personally, but that's my feeling about it.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry. So how would it be determined, the language that actually went into what was codified?
If you didn't, if, if my theory is correct, and you have one-
Correct, yes.
It would look like this, basically. You would conform it, you would do one, because they have, the, all three amendments split out the A and the B, so it's just a matter of putting one after another in B. That's, I think, what happens, but, does that make sense?
It, it does.
Yeah. I mean, it would look like this.
And so that, I guess that goes back to my original question. If that is the theory in play, what does a no amendment do, or a no vote, if this gets voted down?
I, I don't think a no vote, to me, I don't think a no vote does anything. I mean, I don't, there was no intent here for, you know, 4 is passed first. There was no intent for 7 to replace 4. There was no intent for 10 to replace 7. I mean, the notion is all three of these are separate and distinct, and on three separate topics. So the notion was that they would all go into effect, and be, there would be some conformity for codification, at, at the time of codification. It, it's not an unusual situation, to have the same language amended more than once, and this, you know, that's my theory of it. So to me, a no would change nothing.
Ms. Beach, you-
But I think with Beach and I disagree.
Yeah, I think it's two ways to look at it.
Yeah.
That the last amendment that was passed, if this failed, the last amendment that passed would be the only one that stands, because there was no indication, as those votes were being made, that it would be a building upon list.
Okay.
With that-
Okay.
Madam Chair? Is that because we, we added an exception section?
Yes.
I'm not an attorney, but I can see where Ms. Beach is coming from.
Yes. So, all right.
I'm sorry, I have one last question.
Sure.
Who, under our rules, who makes the final determination of how this amendment? Office of law?
The A O.
Or parliamentarian?
The administrative officer makes the last, final decision.
I, by our rules, I am allowed to correct obvious errors in section references and numbers, references to existing law, capitalization, spelling, grammar, headings, and similar matters. I would have to get an opinion as what similar matters are, that why, like, if we just do this, then I don't have to take that extra step. So.
All right. All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 11.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
No.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Nay.
And Ms. Hummer?
Nay.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Amendment Number 11 has been adopted.
So he won't test my theory, is that?
So, Bill Number 225, as amended, will be heard on March 3, 2025. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of Bill Number 325 and Bill Number 425.
Bill Number 325, An Ordinance Concerning General Development Plan, Region 9 Plan. Bill Number 425, An Ordinance Concerning Comprehensive Zoning, Region 9.
All right.
She's in her podcast, so she has to talk.
Yeah. No, I'm not cold. No. All right, Mr. Hunt.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Christina Pampa, our Deputy Planning and Zoning Officer, Cindy Carrier, our Planning Administrator, Eric Ketterling, our Senior Planner, and Kelly Kenny, our Supervising County Attorney. So Bills 325 and 425 are the comprehensive rezoning and region plans for Region 9. I will turn it over to Ms. Pampa, if she wants to make any additional comments.
Absolutely no additional comments. Christina Pampa from OPZ. Happy to be here, Madam Chair and members of council. We're here to answer your questions.
We will now open the joint public hearing on Bill Number 325 and Bill Number 425. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received two pieces for Bill 325 and three pieces for Bill 425, which have been shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
We will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. When I call your name, please come up to the table and have a seat. When it is your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Please listen for the buzzer and respect the two-minute time limit, as others are signed up to speak. If you have more than two minutes to share, I'm going to ask you to submit your additional thoughts as early as tomorrow, using our online testimony tool. Peter Quirk and Susan Sinclair. And if there's anyone else who wishes to speak on Bills Number 325 or 425, you may come up at this time, even if you're not signed up. Come on up and, and sit. So. Sir, you can go ahead. Mr. Quirk?
Yes, good evening. Peter Quirk, 230 Riverside Road in Edgewater. I'm speaking tonight about the two marinas that are proposed for Warehouse Creek. And I've spoke in the last meeting about this. Our community feels that the small, quiet residential Warehouse Creek is being recommended for a grossly unfair amount of commercial marina. Surrounding us, we have a number of creeks, about seven in all. None of them have commercial marinas. We are being proposed for two. If you go to Seven River and look above the bridge, there are only three commercial marinas in that whole area, with multiple creeks. So again, we feel that it's unfair that we're being proposed for two marinas. When it comes to the technical aspects of this, we noted that the reasoning, the justification behind one of those marinas, which would be a new marina, in our view, the justification for that is that it is an existing or historic marina. And it's cited in the plan, based specifically on that reasoning. We've been through all possible avenues to investigate whether or not this is, we don't actually see it having boats. So we went back through the various records. We can find no mention on the, on the online booking docwa or marine.com. We can find no mention of this marina. The, it was up for sale two or three years ago, and you'd think that the, the sales literature would mention the fact, if there was a marina, it didn't.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, did I do two minutes?
Yeah, you did. It goes quickly, I know. It goes quickly. So, ma'am, or, who?
Me?
Yes, go ahead, go ahead.
Is it on? Okay, thanks. Hi, my name is Elizabeth Del Castillo. I was here last time. I am with the Anarundel Radio Club and the Anarundel Bird Club, and I'm the treasurer at South River Park. Again, please do not intensify the marina usage, because the county just helped us breathe life back into our historic beach. The kids are having fun, and we don't want gross stuff coming over from this giant marina. Please look at page, what's this, page four has this, it's all R1. I mean, come on, everybody's there, it's R1. This, page five, we've got the sails. I mean, these people just bought this stuff. They just want a ROI. They don't really want to build a boatyard or work with boats. Also, I was wondering, does anyone think of tax impacts? Like, right now, those properties are pushing off $50,000 on an assessment of $4.8 million. Would another use be better for the county? Please save the trees for the wildlife, and keep it zoning 1. Please make note, there's a resource conservation area even in the vicinity of, which could become a very large piece of marina, I'll show you later. And these are my complaints about, the zoning just does not work there. It's never been a commercial marina. It doesn't have any elements of a commercial marina. The county's comments of attracting commercial fishing and maritime trades is just not, is not possible there. It was not found in the 2018 marina inventory. And, and we look at these parcels, they could just assemble a giant thing there. Like, they know these two guys got zoning up, so they want zoning up, and it just grows. And so you can grow from 2.3 acres up to 2.6 acres, and that's a big concern of ours. So please remember that this is all of the things that they could put there on that, with this zoning. And when you make these decisions, you have to think, like, what is the maximum crazy stuff that can happen? And a 75% coverage on an acre is a lot of parking spaces. So thank you very much for letting me have this opportunity.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Good evening. Thank you. My name is David Harris, and I'm speaking on behalf of Edwin A. John O'Crandall, located at 733 Crandall Road, West River, Maryland. We are a local family-owned and oper-, we are a local family, owned and operate a marine construction company, which I'm a family member and employee. The company has been around for more than 77 years, with the second, third, and fourth generation family members still working here. We, we also hire locally, as well as support the surrounding community. I would like to explain the importance of supporting Bill 425, as it covers the parcel owned by the family business at 1014 East Benning Road in Galesville, Maryland. It is imperative that you vote in favor of the bill, just as it was submitted to the, to the county council back on January 14th by the administration. And due to time, I will use the superabridged version. This change from R, this change from R2 was not due to a desire to have W2, so we could do something new. It is a necessity to continue our business operations in the existing W2 portion of our property, as we have for almost half a century. And that was a rebuttal to comments made on February 3 to you guys. It is imperative for our business operations that the county council vote in favor of Bill 425, as it relates to us, thus eliminating the split zoning of the property, as is being done to numerous other properties around us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on Bills Number 325 and 425? Okay. The joint pump hearing on Bills Number 325 and 425 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bills Number 325 and 425.
Bill Number 325, An Ordinance Concerning- Bill number 325, An Ordinance Concerning General Development Plan, Region 9 Plan. Bill number 425, An Ordinance Concerning Comprehensive Zoning, Region 9.
Okay, there are two amendments to Bill number 425. Madam Secretary, for the upcoming amendments requiring signs for at least 10 days before this legislative session, were signs posted on the subject property and was notice of the proposed change of zoning posted to the county council website.
Yes, Madam Chair. This only pertains to amendment number one, but yes, all the requirements have been met.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number one.
Amendment number one, this amendment changes the zoning of a portion of the property known as parcel 13 on Tax Map 70, located at 4900 Goose Creek Road, Shadyside, from OS Open Space to R1 Residential, and removes OS Open Space from a waterway.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This was an amendment that came in at the request of the property owner. They stated the property's been in the family since the 1800s. Now that they're in their elder years, they would like to be able to age in place. The setback requirements for the OS zoning preclude a desired small addition that would be necessary for them to do a very small first-floor living arrangement so that they can age in place. The development potential on this is incredibly limited. Number one, it's a very small sliver. Number two, it is in the critical area, RCA and LDA, and so they would still have to comply with all critical area regulations when they do look at doing whatever, attempt to do that small addition. Motion to adopt.
All right. Are there any comments or questions? Okay, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number one.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Feedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number one has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number two.
Amendment number two, this amendment changes the zoning of a portion of the property known as parcel 213 on Tax Map 60, located at 1052 Turkey Point Road, Edgewater, from MA2 light commercial marina to MC heavy commercial marina.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This, again, was an owner requested amendment. It was a consistency change recommended originally.
Sorry.
In the bill, there was a ownership change during the comprehensive rezoning process. The new owner was not aware that this small section of their property was going, was recommended for a zoning change. They didn't have the opportunity to comment during the process. It's about 0.4 acres. It's entirely in the LDA, and it would be subject to all critical area requirements should they try to do anything. I would just, before we do a motion to, before we do vote, Admin may want to have a comment as well.
I'm forgetting about y'all. I'm sorry. My apologies. Admin, what do you think?
Eric Ketterling, Office of Planning and Zoning, Senior Planner. I think Ms. Ledbetter covered a lot of the bases. The only thing I'd like to give a little more information on is the staff was informed that the property owner, the new property owner purchased the property in July of 2024, which is when most of the process had already completed. The SAC process has gone through most of their discussions and conversations. But staff mailed other letters in September of 2024, which is when the new property owner received notification. The new property owner notified staff in late November of 2024, which was after the PAB planning process. So, which is why he was unable to provide an application during the planning advisory board, which is why we're here tonight. And OPZ offers no objection to the amendment.
Okay. Did we have a motion?
I don't think we did.
Thank you. Motion to adopt.
Okay.
Worried about letting Admin have their.
Ms. Radvian?
I actually was curious if Admin approved of the council's vote on the previous amendment.
I know, I forgot to ask y'all, I'm sorry. Didn't mean to leave you out.
We were okay. Thank you.
I skipped that. So is there any other discussion on amendment number two? All right, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number two.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Feedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number two has been adopted.
May I get a motion to hold the vote on Bill number 325 until March 3, 2025?
Second.
Second. Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to hold the vote on Bill number 325 until March 3, 2025.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Just to clarify, the public hearing will remain open, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Feedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to hold the vote on Bill 325 until March 3 has passed.
So Bill number 424, 425, as amended, will be heard again on March 3, 2025. All right, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution number 625.
Resolution number 625, resolution in honor of Heart Health Month urging Anarundel County to provide the community with tools to help save people suffering from sudden cardiac events by installing publicly accessible wall-mounted or standalone automated external defibrillators, AEDs, in Anarundel County parks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a resolution in honor of Heart Health Month, as it was stated. We, the council, and particularly in my district, there is an opportunity that has presented itself with, at Severn Danza Park and the Severn Athletic Club, have been working alongside our fire department and our county to be able to locate a donated AED machine and an outside accessible cabinet. We have about 350 AEDs throughout the county, but they're mostly behind locked doors. And we know from the 20-year history in Talbot County, where they have a program that supplies AEDs outside in their parks. And Howard County has just recently created a program where 17 of their parks have AEDs accessible at all times outside of locked buildings. We have a group of heart-healthy enthusiasts that would like the county to work with them, to help engage AEDs and outside climate-controlled kiosks in our parks. There are three, it's my understanding, we have three that have been donated, and we just need to include them in our AED program. This resolution is just urging the administration to work collaboratively in this public-private partnership and so that we can move forward in a program of our own.
Administration, you want to weigh in on that?
Certainly, just briefly, Councilmember Picker brought this to our attention, that there was an issue and some challenges that folks were running into. I appreciate that she brought it to our attention, and we support the resolution.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, is there any additional discussion? Mr. Smith?
Yes, this is, thank you, Madam Chair. Just in the spirit of Connors Law, when we passed that in 2012, and we put those AEDs at pools, this is definitely a good initiative to get behind. So I'm definitely supportive of it and would like to co-sponsor the resolution as well.
Noted. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
I'll jump on, too.
Mr. Volkey jumps on, too. Ms. Feedler, you can join the bandwagon.
Make it seven, though.
All right. Ms. Pickard, do you have something else?
Oh, no, I just.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution number 625.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Feedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution 625 has been adopted.
Ms., Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution number 725.
Resolution number 725, resolution urging members of the General Assembly to support House Bill 735 and Senate Bill 642 in furtherance of increasing the recycling and reuse of beverage containers and reducing litter and pollution.
Ms. Radvian?
Thank you. So I'm bringing this resolution forward on behalf of the Maryland Sierra Club, who is looking to get this legislation passed in Maryland. You are probably aware that on any soda can, there is a little deposit, information about a deposit program, that by returning a can to a recycling center, or a bottle, or any other beverage container, that you can get a little deposit back. It has the great incentive of allowing, actually encouraging, recycling, and it really drives up recycling rate at a 15-cent deposit rate. I actually, I'm not sure what the, I'm embarrassed, I don't know the, off the top of my head, what rate they're considering, but it gets recycling to about 90%. And recycling of beverage containers without is much, much lower. It's below 50%. So I would hope my colleagues can support this and send a message to the General Assembly to, let's join this program that's been in place in some states for decades. And it's actually even a great way for, you know, kids to go clean up a beach and make some money at the same time. So I ask for your support. Oh, and I will, one of my colleagues had asked me earlier, what was the cost of this program to the state? So after the first year, it breaks even. So it was, it's zero cost. So it pays for itself. The first year, it will cost the state about $225,000, which is a significant amount of money. But in the perspective of the state's $63.1 billion budget, it is less than 1/100th of a percent. So it is a very, very tiny fraction, a very small outlay to eventually break even and dramatically get, increase our recycling rates and get a whole lot of plastic out of our environment. So I ask for your support.
Administration, do you want to weigh in on this? Okay. Is there any discussion? Mr. Smith?
I'll just briefly say, when we were growing up, my stepfather and one of his friends used to collect some of the cans and turn those in. And so, believe it or not, there were, there were days in my youth where we ate because we collected cans. So those five cents, we'd get several hundred of them, turn them in, they'd give us several dollars, and that's how we actually ate dinner. And so it was five cents back then, and this was the early 90s. And I was about 12 years old, walking down the street, picking up cans, putting them in a trash bag. So it will actually help feed people, too. So, thank you.
All right.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Feedler?
Sorry, I haven't read through the bill all the way, or both bills. What is the, can you explain the state's investment upfront? What is the cost? Okay, and it looks like our, I don't know if the Maryland General Assembly's website is up to date, but it looks like both bills are in committee. Is that right?
Yes, and there was a hearing, I believe, I'm not sure, on the House side or the Senate side. One side has had their hearing, actually just this past Friday, and the other one has it, I believe, at the end of this week. So that's why I'm asking for a vote tonight, because if we can, you know, get this message while it's still in committee, it might help it get out of committee.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Is there a cost to the, an upfront cost to the consumer? So someone who purchases and then, for whatever reason, doesn't turn them, I understand they're going to get something back, but if they don't turn them in, what is the cost to the consumer?
The cost is whatever the amount of the deposit that the General Assembly chooses is. So it, I believe they're five, 10, or 15 cents.
Do we know which one of those it might be?
I can see if I can find out.
I was trying to dig through as well. I thought maybe you.
All right, Mr. Volkey?
Yeah, I'm just going to add, I recognize, I'm reading the fiscal note, right, on the bill, on HB 735. And so while there certainly, it is a net revenue, or it's a net zero revenue bill, in the sense that there is revenue that comes in and there's expenditure that goes out, the revenue has to come from somewhere. And so it's coming from consumers, or it's coming from the businesses who are producing these bottles, but it's not coming from nowhere. So, you know, this program is going to cost in FY 2028, $5.565 million. It's going to be $5.582 million in FY '29. So there is a significant component to this that is, yes, there are, you know, the state is funding it, but the money has to come from somewhere, and it comes from private individuals or private businesses.
Thank you. I actually believe that's exactly where it should come from. If we're putting plastics into the environment, you know, we should be responsible for the complete life cycle of whatever that beverage container is. And I realize this is simply beverage containers. Unfortunately, I think the way plastics are regulated in the United States, some at the state level, you know, we were able to do bags at the local level. Lots of grocery store plastic probably can't be touched without federal intervention, but any little chip away we can make, and, you know, it's, it's long been an externalized cost, which is time to bring it back to those who are incurring it.
Any other comments? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution number 725.
Ms. Ledbetter?
I just don't think I have enough information to take a position abstaining.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Feedler?
Just for matter of record, I remember collecting cans, too, Mr. Smith. It's back to the old days. I had far less knowledge of fiscal, government fiscal impacts and all of that when I was younger as well, and I don't know if the program operated in that manner. But I'm actually going to abstain this evening. Yes, there's the component of not having enough information, but I, I don't typically like to get involved in discussions that are at different levels of government. And I know we have passed legislation here at the council that we advocated as individuals before the General Assembly. I'm much more comfortable with that approach. So with that, I abstain.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
And Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, one in the negative, and two abstain. The Resolution 725 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution number 825.
Resolution number 825, resolution appointing members to the ad hoc committee established to study and make recommendations on personnel policies for the legislative branch of the Anarundel County Government and extending the deadline for the final report.
This is last, can't remember when, it was last April. We passed a resolution as council to form an ad hoc committee to study, as this said, study and make recommendations on different personnel policies for the legislative branch. This is, this resolution actually appoints the members that we outlined that. It also adds our legislative council to the committee and extends the deadline for the final report so that this group can get moving and hopefully give us some good information to strengthen our own branch of government. So I ask for everyone's support on that. Is there any discussion? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution number 825.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Feedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
With thanks to those who will be giving their time for this committee, aye.
And Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution 825 has been adopted.
Okay. Is there any other business any council member would like to bring before the county council at this time? All right, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The county council is adjourned until Monday, March 3, 2025, at 7:00 PM for our next legislative session in our council, in our chambers. Good night. And enjoy the rest of Black History Month.